All right, we're going to get this meeting started. Welcome to the March 11th State Board of Education meeting. Welcome to all of our board members that are here and to Ms. Woods and Ms. Chambers that are joining us online. Good morning. Mr. Sutton is not going to be with us this morning. He's enjoying his family on vacation this week. And Mr. Hill will be joining us shortly. He is coming from a previous meeting, so he's on his way. So why don't we get started with a moment of silence in light of a lot of the things that have happened since the last time we met. I think it's so important for us to take time to really focus on our students here in Arkansas and the care and the attention that is needed to make sure that they are taken care of in the best way possible. You can take this moment of silence to focus your mind, meditate, take this time to pray. I plan to take a moment to pray for guidance for what we should do for our children and to ensure that they are protected and loved while they are in the care of educators while they're in school. So if you would, join me for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to Superintendent of the Year. I don't see him here right now.
Thank you. I think Dr. Hernandez is here.
Okay.
Out in the plating room. They're all out in the lobby.
Okay, awesome.
If they can hear us, Mr. Poor, Dr. Hernandez, that group can come on in.
All right, well then it's time for that presentation for Superintendent of the Year for Mike Poor, and that's going to be presented by AAEA. We're so glad to be a part of celebrating Mr. Poor's excellence in leadership here in Little Rock. We have appreciated his leadership here, working with the Little Rock School District, and his community involvement and engagement and how he just works so well with all of the stakeholders here in Little Rock. So we're so happy to celebrate him. Dr. Jay Barth is joining us, Dr. Hernandez, Ms. Smith, and there's Mr. Poor. So.
Madam Chair, they can't hear us out in the lobby, so.
They can't? Oh, okay.
Then if we could check to see what's going on there.
All right. Okay, so I'm not sure who's presenting. Okay, Dr. Hernandez, welcome. Good to see you again.
So good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
Mike Hernandez, Executive Director for AAEA. Good to be back, especially under these circumstances. I just wanted to come and present to you our 2021 Superintendent of the Year. This program is part of the National AASA, which is our national superintendent organization where every year we recognize on the state level but also gets recognized on the national level for this very prestigious award. And so this year, as you may have heard, we haven't been able to come to the state board immediately due to COVID, but we would like to take this opportunity to recognize somebody y'all know very well.
Yes.
And we'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize Mike Poor from the Little Rock School District after 2021 Superintendent of the Year.
Thank you.
He's already been presented once before. We'll be presenting him again in a central media audience. I'll turn it over to Mr. Poor.
Welcome, Mr. Poor.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. It's a pleasure to be back here with all of you and with those that are out there in the virtual world too, so I want to say hi to all of you as well. It's a thrill to be honored by all of you and also honored on a day where we also have Jefferson Elementary getting recognized as a Blue Ribbon School. It was actually one of the first calls that the Commissioner had to give me guidance as the Superintendent of Little Rock Public Schools, in that he called and he said, hey, don't screw this up. Sandra Register is about ready to possibly retire. You've got to, whatever you do, put some time in early with her to make sure she stays with the district. That was a wise set of counsel that he gave me, and today Jefferson Elementary is recognized as a Blue Ribbon. So congratulations, Ms. Register, and all the Jefferson crew today too. You know, this honor's been really cool because it's an honor to my family. Of course, my wife, Mary Ann, and I have really had a lot of fun with this. My parents, it's been really special for my parents because you think of how we all grew up, and I had just amazing parents, and they're still really highly engaged in me. And then my kids, who were the one group that actually got why when Johnny Key took me out to dinner at Cracker Barrel to offer me the job in the Little Rock schools, which I said, seriously, that's what you're doing? You're offering me the job in Little Rock? This is how you court somebody at a Cracker Barrel? And but my kids were the ones that got instantly and said, this is totally you to go towards Little Rock and, you know, try to work in kind of a challenging environment and work in a place where maybe not everyone wants you there. It's a really cool honor to, you know, to have your peers come into a board meeting. And some of you have had that experience as Teachers of the Year, where you're utterly surprised, and you have all these folks come in. You know, it was during COVID, we probably broke some sort of rule of who all showed up, and it just was overwhelming. And it was funny because my wife led the charge into the room, and by the time everyone got in, and I finally turned again to kind of take a stock of the room, all of a sudden I recognized, my wife is here too, you know? I was like, wow, this is really a crazy thing. So my peers and all the interactions I've had with them and the superintendent conference, that's really special. My school families, I will share that as a part of winning this award, I got this beautiful ring. And when I got the ring, the thing that I asked them, because there's kind of a stock way maybe that they do it, but I said, is there a way that I can, is there any way I can personalize it? And they said yes. And so what they allowed me to do is on the inside of it, was there's a way that I could honor my four school districts that I've served. Because if you think about it, those four school districts are who I have tried to aspire to lead, and they've helped me grow as an individual and raised me, whether it's Carter Springs District 11, which I had, let's see, trying to think now, we had 23 years in that district and four years in Denver, Colorado, at Sheridan, and then getting to come to Bentonville and, you know, the impact that Bentonville had on me for those five years. And now in Little Rock, that family of my school family is so impactful to me and, you know, made me who I want to be each and every day. They've helped shape me. And so it's kind of neat that I think it lifts up all those individuals to say, you know, you did pretty good. You helped make me a Superintendent of the Year. You know, one of the interesting things, when you think about the department and the State Board, and that's where I'll shift and try to finish with, is the, when you look at the department and a lot of times, especially in Little Rock, people are like, oh my gosh, you know, we got to get rid of them. And you've heard me say over and over and over, the department, working with Little Rock School District, has been one of the best things that's happened, and no one really understands the depth of how hard that work was initially with just trying to create systems. You know, every system had to be modified and changed, and it's such a vastly better product of what we have right now to work to make sure that kids are really being taken care of and that also our financial ends of things are in a way that we can really be able to understand how it matches up with everybody else. But doing all those things, and you know, usually you try to go one system, you know, in a given year, major system. We were doing three and four for those first two years of trying to institute those. But that happened, like, you know, starting off with Mike, you know, he's been with this thing from the get-go of helping and supporting. But Sheila Whitlow was another person that really, especially when we started to get our legs on the academic thing, Sheila has been just instrumental. And then the Commissioners, two current right hands of Stacy and Ivy, and the work that they've done to support me. But I can go back and look at this gentleman helping us with getting Hall started. You know, there's just so many wonderful things that connects us to this department that have helped the Little Rock School District. And of course, our Commissioner, I appreciate that he and I are friends, he and I are colleagues, he and I are peers, and, you know, we don't, we don't and haven't always agreed. But that is kind of commonplace in a world when you're talking about kids, because when you're talking about kids, there's going to be some things that are going to lead to sometimes some disagreements. But no one really will ever understand the significance of the support that we've received from the department as we've worked to make the Little Rock School District better each and every day. And that then ties to all of you as a State Board. And I want to thank you. Some of you got started in my life a little earlier than others, so I see Susan out there, and, you know, Susan connected me in so many different ways within the Bentonville region of always being accessible, even as the head of the largest organization in the world leading their human resource department. She was trying to manufacture ways that fits into Ms. Dean's concept of community involvement and figuring out a way, and we thought the best way to do that was through schools. And so always just blessed that. Ms. Zook, who was as a part of the State Chamber, her and Randy, always reaching out and trying to find ways to support Jay Barth as the Board Chair. And when I saw Jay out there, I go, what are you doing here today? Are you presenting on community schools? He goes, no, I'm here to talk about you. And I thought, well, I'm so glad I had you in my speech because he has been a great help. Sarah, you and I first got started working on career education, and you read all my white papers and then tried to help through the Governor's Office to do things differently with career education. And I think of where we're at now on career education over this span of time, that was a part of you jumping in and helping us, and appreciate that. And then, and I don't mean to leave out a couple of you as board members I haven't got to formally work with, but I want to specifically thank Ms. Dean. Ms. Dean has been a part of the Little Rock community as a parent, so she believes in the school system and has her kids in the Little Rock schools. She has been a champion for community involvement, has worked with people like Pam Smith to try to find a better way to do community engagement. She has been on the door and helping us with everything from poor man on the roof to helping us with ideas on how we can even, you know, do a better job of working out with our community. And then finally Fitzhill, and I hope Dr. Hill, I don't see him on the, yep, he is out there someplace, but Dr. Hill, you know, with all the things that he's done as a part of helping us with, you know, everyone understands him as being a part of the athletic end of things, and what he's done has been tremendous in terms of the Athletic Foundation and the Sixth and Goal-type programs to get kids engaged. But what people don't understand is he brings even more passion about the fact that we have young people that are losing their life right now in our communities because of a little bit of the disengagement of people in learning environments, and they're not tied into our schools right now with in-person learning, and there's just a, everybody's in a kind of a strange place. He is front and center on trying to always think about what we go do to get kids engaged and involved. And so, and Ms. McFetrich, I'll mention you as, you know, the one thing, I just remember some of the conversations we had when we were talking about Little Rock, and you and Brett were always there wanting to always receive my call, and so I appreciate that, and I'm glad that you're on the State Board. So I'll finish and just thank each of you for this opportunity to be with you today. It was really an honor. I feel like I'm getting to represent the entire state and represent, of course, my peers and then my districts, my four districts that I've got to serve, and in particular the Little Rock School District with this recognition, and it kind of lifts all of us in some ways, and certainly has lifted me, and I'm very proud to be the Superintendent of the Year for the state of Arkansas. Thank you.
Dr. Barth, it's good to see you again.
Wow, it's great to see you all. I miss y'all enormously. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about my partner in the work of this, not just this district but also this community. And we all know that a healthy community only is healthy if its schools are whole and healthy and vice versa. And that's our philosophy here in Little Rock. Bring greetings from the mayor and everybody else in the city and everybody else in the community to Mike. Mike, as he alluded to, arrived in this place with a lot of cynicism. I think few superintendents have arrived in a less hospitable place. It wasn't anything about him, it was about context, we all know, but he had a lot to prove. And he was also arriving to a place that was very different than cities he had lived before, communities he'd lived before. This was a very different place. And he just went to work, learning this community and letting this community learn who he is and what his values are and how much he loves kids and believes in the power of public education. And over time, this community has come to really have a deep fondness for Mike Poor. And, you know, what, a couple of things about, that make, I think, Mike special as a school leader. First are his deep engagement in a community. He is involved in everything and he is everywhere. And that's maybe easy in a small town, a small community, it's really difficult in a community this size. And he is everywhere all the time, and people know him and have really developed personal connections with him. The second thing he does amazingly well is build partnerships. He is a natural partner. And for, as Ms. Dean knows and others of you know, this only works if the community and the part, and the school district are in full-fledged partnership. And that has really, I think, defined our relationship. When I came on board as Chief Education Officer for the city, you know, we meet every week, we talk a lot more beyond that, and are constantly talking about how we can creatively work together to make this district and this community better. And of course, the community school effort is front and center in terms of it's all about partnerships. But of course, in this last year, we have seen the power of partnerships in this community in response to COVID in, I think, very powerful ways. A year ago tomorrow, we were all bunched in a little room in City Hall. It's almost comical now how unmasked and on top of each other we were. But we knew that the Plasque County schools were closing, and we did not know how kids were going to eat the next day who were dependent upon school lunches. And we had a partner, we had the district, we had the city, we had folks who are hunger specialists, we had the Clinton Foundation, we had Rock Region Metro to help with transportation, all in that room figuring out a plan. And over the months after that, you know, over 750,000 meals were served to kids and parents in this district, and it really made a difference. And we had a very similar partnership when it came to broadband access, creating a more digitally equitable city when it comes to connectivity, when it comes to devices, and when it comes to digital literacy in a community where there are folks who really don't have that comfort level with devices. The third thing I want to say about what this man does very well is he hires great staff, and staff that are reflective of the beautiful diversity of the city, but also folks who share that commitment to partnership, whose first answer is, I don't know if we can do it, but we'll try to figure out a way, rather than no, we can't do it. And that's at the heart and soul. And so we know the sign of a truly great leader is surrounding him or herself with those kinds of staff members, those kinds of folks who will reflect them in their work. So congratulations, Mike, on behalf of everybody, and we hope you stay around for a while. Thank you. Thank you all. Great to see you. Hope to see you soon.
If this isn't rebuttal, Mike, I promise. Madam Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to speak on this occasion. I have not gotten to, you know, when we had the AAEA, had the presentation, it didn't work out for me to be there. And Mr. Poor has gotten a lot of mileage out of that Cracker Barrel story. And so I think he's probably glad because if I'd taken him out to a steak dinner, he wouldn't have nearly as good a story to tell. But, you know, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that Dr. Barth said because as I reflect on the years that Mike and I have worked together, all of those things are true. And so I just ditto what you said, Jay. The thing that strikes me about Mike and his leadership is that he, at a time when things were very unstable, he created stability. He was able to bring stability to a situation that was and continued to be very difficult. But he did that by always communicating, always talking, you know. He's somebody who will, even in the highest levels of disagreement, he continues communicating. And that's not, that's just not typical in our society today. We tend to go off into our corners when we get mad at each other, and maybe we never took, you know, speak again in a productive way. And, you know, Mr. Poor has shown that he's kind of a throwback to, hey, we just got to keep talking, and we'll get to a solution. And he does that to this day. I mean, all the solutions aren't there yet. They haven't been implemented. All the issues have not been resolved. There are, as this board knows, there are things that happen in state takeover or that in districts that state takeover is not a magic pill. You know, there is still a number of things, there are still a number of things that have to be dealt with, and he's dealing with them, and he has a great team to do that. But a great team doesn't come about without a great leader. And so congratulations to you, well-deserved, Mike, on this honor. I think it's a great selection. I think you'll represent Arkansas well at the next level, AASA, and you already do. So, you know, I thank you for the years we've worked together and for whatever years we will continue to work together in whatever capacity. Really appreciate what you have brought to the state and appreciate what you have brought to this community.
Thank you so much for your service with the Little Rock School District and the previous school districts that you've served. Like he said, ditto to everything that everyone else has said. It's been a pleasure having you here in Little Rock School District, and the community has truly benefited from your presence, and we look forward to the great things that you'll continue to do for the city. So thank you all for your time and for being here.
We usually get a picture. I don't see Kimberly. You got it all? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get a still. Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Barth, could y'all come back in and?
Okay, next we have the International Social Emotional Learning Day State Board Resolution, and that'll be presented by Lisa Tyler, Susan Jobe. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thank you.
You're welcome.
March 26th is being celebrated as the Second Annual International Social Emotional Learning Day, and in honor of this day, the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education is requesting that the Arkansas State Board of Education proclaim the Third Week of March as Guide for Life Week.
Awesome, wonderful. Would you like to read the resolution?
Whereas the Arkansas Department of Education's vision is to lead the nation in student-focused education by ensuring that every Arkansin is equitably prepared, supported, and inspired to succeed in school, career, community, and life. And whereas it is our mission for all Arkansas students to graduate with a strong foundation of academic knowledge, experience, proficiencies, and soft skills in order that they are actively literate, critical thinkers, and actively engaged in their communities in positive ways. And whereas the Arkansas Department of Education has identified five guiding principles that support educators, business leaders, communities, and students in their efforts to help all Arkansins develop these critical skills. And whereas the Guide for Life program with the support of Arkansas educators is designed to give students a plan they can follow to achieve personal success. And whereas by incorporating the Guide for Life concepts throughout the school experience, educators can help cultivate these real-world skills for success in all Arkansas students. Now therefore, be it resolved that in honor of the Second Annual International Social Emotional Learning Day, the Arkansas State Board of Education encourages schools to celebrate the Guide for Life program during the week of March 15th through 19th, 2021.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. This is a great resolution. It kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, is educating the whole child, not just academically, but to have those soft skills and be able to communicate, be great communicators, as we were talking about earlier with Superintendent Poor. So thank you so much, and we appreciate your time today. Thank you. If you'll let me sign that before you take it?
Oh, this is on recognition, but being a resolution, I think we do need a vote by the board for adoption.
Do we have a motion for adoption? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McFetrich to adopt the resolution. I have a second. Seconded by Ms. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, let's move on to what's next on the agenda. All right, now we're down to the recognition of the 2020 Blue Ribbon Schools, and the presenter for that will be Mr. Bobby Lester. There he is. Good morning, Mr. Lester. Welcome.
When I was asked to recognize the National Blue Ribbon Schools and the St. schools, I got really excited because the facts are, I work in I got really excited because the facts are, I work in federal programs in the Accountability Office and usually when I make a call, it's usually, Bobby, what did I do? Today I get to say, we love what you do. So, really excited about recognizing these schools today. First ones I'm going to recognize is the National Blue Ribbon Schools. The U.S. Secretary of Education recognized 367 schools as National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2020. Recognition is based on a school's overall academic performance or progress in closing the achievement gaps among student subgroups. The Education Department recognizes all schools in one of two performance categories based on all student scores, subgroup scores, and graduation rates. The two categories are the exemplary high-performing schools. These are among the, the state's highest performing schools as measured by state assessments or nationally-normed state scores. The exemplary achievement gap closing schools, these are among the state's highest performing in closing the achievement gap between the school's student groups and all students. We have two schools to recognize in the exemplary high-performing schools. First one is Jefferson Elementary in the Little Rock School District. The principal there is Sandra Register and the superintendent, we just met, Mike Poor. So, congratulations to Jefferson Elementary. Our second high-performing school is Bernice Young Elementary. It is in the Springdale School District. The principal there is Debbie Flora and the superintendent at the time was Dr. Jim Rollins. Our Blue Ribbon Schools that closed the achievement gap. First school is Udora Elementary. The school district is Udora. The principal there was Ross Sims and the superintendent is Billy Adams. Our second closing achieving, get, close the achievement gap, I'll get it. Closing the achievement gap school was Crawford Elementary. It is in the Russellville School District. The principal there is Siobhan Jackson and the superintendent, Dr. Mark Gocher. Give a hand for all of our national distinguished schools. Our next group recognized is the National ESEA Distinguished Schools. The National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators, now known as NESAPA, formerly the National Title I Association, has been selecting examples of superior federally-funded school programs for national recognition through the National ESEA Distinguished Schools Program. They celebrate the efforts of schools across the country making significant improvement. There are two categories for the distinguished schools. The first category is the exceptional school performance and academic growth for two or more consecutive years. The second category are schools that are closing the achievement gap between student groups for two or more consecutive years. Our exceptional performance for two consecutive-year school is Pottsville Elementary. It's in the Pottsville School District. The principal there is Mr. Shannon Davis and the superintendent Larry Dugger. Our closing the achievement gap school is Nashville Primary. It is in the primary, it is in the Nashville School District. The principal there is Nathan Evans and the superintendent is Douglas Graham. Let's give them a hand. We have an additional, I'm very excited about this because it's, it's, it's pretty rare and we should be very proud. This is the recognition of the Terrell H. Bell Award. The Terrell H. Bell Award recognizes outstanding school leaders and the vital role they play in guiding students and schools to excellence, frequently under challenging circumstances. Principals are nominated by their school communities during the final stages of the National Blue Ribbon Schools application process. The U.S. Department of Education, together with the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the Association for Middle Level Education, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, bestow the Bell Award on a handful of principals each year. In 2020, 10 principals across the nation were recognized. Arkansas was blessed with one. I miss Siobhan Jackson, the principal of Crawford Elementary School in the Russellville School District. The superintendent there is Dr. Mark Gocher. Let's give Ms. Jackson a big hand. Each school district, including Ms. Jackson, will be receiving a plaque that we will be sending to you. Under the, under the normal circumstances, we'd have them here and presenting it to them. We'll have to do it this way. I wanted to take just one second of your time to, the program administrator over, that sees this process through is Ms. Otis Dean Smith. And she has been working with me for 10 years, but she has worked for the state for 42 years. And she is retiring this year. And I wanted to just take a second to say thank you for all that you've done for Arkansas and seeing this process through. When we went to national conferences, she had these folks in order and she had me in order. You've got to meet her, okay? She kept it going. She's behind the scenes, gathering the data, making the process go well. So, I just wanted to recognize her and to tell her appreciate the services she had for us. Thank you.
Chair, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm glad you said something, Bobby, because I was going to ask you to say something anyway if, if you, if you didn't. But Ms. Otis Dean is, is one of those gems that, you know, you, you, you just value. And just the, the idea that she is retiring, not going to be here, that, that's a little hard to take because she is so effective at what she does and she is very organized. I can't imagine another state in the nation that has someone that administers this program as effectively as, as Ms. Otis Dean has for the last several years. And it's definitely going to be, we, we will miss her. It's going to be a loss to the agency, a loss to the state. But she is a great example of what I tell the team here, that whatever position you hold, you have an impact on a child in a classroom. All of these kids that have been into the, in these Blue Ribbon Schools and, and probably maybe all or most of the, the teachers and the principals, they're not going to know the name Otis Dean Smith. But without Otis Dean Smith, they would not have gotten that recognition, I believe, because she is very, has always been very diligent, always wanted to make sure Arkansas had representation, always made sure we got our deadlines met. And that's just, that was just a small part, you know, the Blue Ribbon, and Title I schools and all that's just a small part of what she did, did. But anyway, I just want to say to the board, to the public that might be listening, and Ms. Otis Dean, you heard me brag on you once already last week, but I'm going to do it again and to just say congratulations. We, we, we wish you every good wish for your retirement and we will miss you when you're gone. So, thank you all for letting me have a minute just to talk about Ms. Otis Dean.
Thank you for that minute, too.
You're welcome.
Can I add something to that? As a teacher over the years, I've had contact with Ms. Smith and just her professionalism, her kindness for, for, sometimes we would be in, in situations that would be a little tense on our end and she would always make us feel at ease and work with us and, and I just have the highest regard for her and how all she's done for education over the years. And I just want to wish her a very happy retirement.
I want to do the same. I've, I've enjoyed working with her as a part of the Committee of Practitioners. She always has everything lined up. She gets us our material ahead of time. She's sending emails checking with us if you haven't or letting us know if, if we've missed checking in with her and letting her know that we were going to be a part of the meeting. It's always been a joy working with her and dealing with her the short time that I've had to, to get to know her. So, I hope she has a wonderful time in her retirement and just want to say thank you for the years of dedication you have put forth for the children of Arkansas. Thanks so much. Yes, Ms. McFetrich?
I had the, I had the title a while ago, but I have never forgotten. She was giving a fair conference on the girlfriend here. But she was amazing. So, congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't want the moment, I mean, I love celebrating great moments and Ms. Otis Dean's retirement is, is definitely a great moment in her life. But I just want to say something about the schools. You know, we didn't get to have the celebration that, that they deserve because of, of the pandemic situation. And wish that we could go back and have those celebrations later. Maybe we will, I, I don't know. But I, just think about the list of, of the schools and the leaders that we heard about. Okay? So, you know, Dr. Gocher, you know, I've talked to him a number of times about the work that's going on there in that school. He was just so proud. All the other schools, Jefferson Elementary, you know, Bernice Young. It, it's just, when you think about those schools and then you think about places like Udora. Okay? That, how many, how many times does Udora come across our mind or come across our news feed or come across our, our emails? But knowing that, that Mr. Adams down there and, and that team are in the extreme southeast part of the state, they are working very hard to meet the needs of, of the kids down there and recognize today. So, just all of these schools, I want to say congratulations to, to all of you, to all of the leaders of these schools and these districts. You're, you are a, you're an example of what we hope other schools could go and say, how did y'all do this?
Yeah.
What is it that's happening in a national primary school that, that makes you so special, that, that gets you so much success for your students? So, we, we hope that we get the opportunity to, maybe we could do something at, in our conference that, that we have coming up in the summer should the circumstances allow us to continue that. That may highlight some of these schools a, a little bit better than what we could today. But we certainly didn't want to let the day pass without having that, this opportunity to honor you and the great work that the teachers are doing there. And just, you know, can't say enough how much we have, we have great examples of education in the state of Arkansas. And our, our mission is to make sure that all students have the opportunity for those, in those educational settings. So, great work. Thanks for what you do and keep up the good work.
Yes. I'm glad you said that because that was one thing that I was thinking about. That's one of the things I really look forward to is getting to meet all of these great leaders from across the state. And that's one thing that I miss about these types of presentations is not being able to see their smiling faces and shake their hands and tell them congratulations face to face. But hopefully, as you said before, we'll get an opportunity to do that in the future. But in the meantime, we do want to honor you and we do want to say thank you for your service and that we appreciate your excellence in leadership. So, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, Ms. Woods.
Is there any way that we could get a list of those award recipients and their emails, just to shoot them a note?
Yes, we'll, we'll make that available for you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else before we move on? Okay, so we are down to the consent agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have any questions or items on the consent agenda that want to be pulled or that you want to discuss? Ms. Newton?
I would just have some comments in a minute.
Okay.
I, I do think I want to discuss four and six and just see.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Ms. Newton, go ahead.
As I read through these, I, I had concerns on six as well, but I think something that helped me greatly was what Ms. Saracini and Ms. Douglas did last week as far as the training to help me understand what goes on for the process and the investigations and the, the light that's put on each one of these cases. And so, you know, I, I, I would have probably in the past pulled number six in thinking that maybe it wasn't severe enough. But in, in light of the training, and I, I want to publicly thank Ms. Saracini and Ms. Douglas and their team and, and the Subcommittee for all of their hard work and what they do. It really opened my eyes to the detail that goes into, to these and, and it, it, not only on the front end, but then also on the back end as some of these trainings are done and the written reflections are done. It just made me feel more comfortable accepting some of the, the consequences that I think in the past I probably would have sent back to, to have, for them to have another look. So, that, that was just my comments on, on six.
Okay. Ms., Dr. Moore?
I echo those same thoughts and certainly that, the training last week was very helpful. I, I, I talked this morning with Ms. Douglas and I, I think I'm in a different place than I was prior to this with four and six. But particularly looking first at four, a, one-year probation, just, it felt very light to me in light of the circumstances. And I know, and, and I know it went through, it already went through the Subcommittee, so we can't kick it back and so I don't, I want to hear thoughts. I don't know if we should bring it to us for a hearing or if we think that those two processes are sufficient. But I do want us and, you know, the precedent that is set in these cases. You know, you know, there certainly are, like we talked about mitigating factors that we don't even see. I think it's hard for me when I, I don't see that and I just see the paper. But at the end of the day, I also want to make sure that we're making decisions that, you know, are protecting students in the future.
Let me make sure I understand. Four also did the Subcommittee and the Ethics Hearing. So, it's been through an additional stage. So, I think that was the reason that I felt comfortable on that.
Yeah, and I think if we had come with their original recommendation, I would, it would have been more comfortable, but then it was bumped down. And, and I think my concern is ameliorated to some extent with the fact that, that, that committee will go back and look at those written reflections. But I think we've seen before where an incident occurs and that person just simply moves on to another district or another state or another area and that behavior is not corrected and, and might occur again. I don't, I just want to open up a little bit of discussion and see if anyone else felt pulled to do a hearing or if we feel comfortable with that recommend, final recommendation.
I, I would say, looking at the circumstances around the incident and the fact that it's gone through this process, it's gone through two different processes, I feel comfortable with the decision that was made. Once, once again, it goes back to what we've said so many times before is that we have to look at each case, case by case, and the circumstances around what happened in those particular cases. And I think in this particular case, it was extremely insinuating circumstances. And, um, didn't leave a lot of options for the educator. And so, I think that's probably why when it was gone through again, it was actually bumped down because of, because of getting a deeper look at what actually happened there in the situation, so.
I think what, I mean, and, and I think four and six being the same, I do have a higher bar for a principal in that they have received the additional trainings and, and things. And both of those cases kind of set me off again, you know, for looking at a, a mitigating factor of a first-year teacher versus a veteran principal in both of these cases. I don't know. Yeah.
Ms. Newton?
Again, I, I think that if I had not have had the training, I probably would have pulled. But because of the training and realizing the, what they've already gone through and, and how deeply they look at it, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with both four and six as they're presented.
I am as well. Do we have any further discussion or questions or comments? Ms. Chambers?
I'd say something very similar to what you said. I, I appreciate what Dr. Moore is raising because some of this was shocking, at least in terms of the material that we could read. But as Ms. Newton said, the, the training was incredibly valuable, the rigor that they go through. And that fact that they made a decision and then actually changed the decision said quite a bit to me about, they learned something else, because they don't strike me as a, as a group that would make a change superficially. So I would, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting the rendered opinions as given.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Any other comments? Okay. Well, if there's no more questions or comments, then I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as a whole.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Newton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. All right. Now we are down to our action agenda. The first one is Ethics Hearing Committee Recommendation for Tiffany Gant, and the presenter is Ms. Amy Douglas, good morning.
Educator Gant is here, let me go get her from, her attorney is not here, but she is present.
Okay. Did we lose her?
Mr. Beahan's going to look for her.
Okay.
She is here, but it looks, seems like she stepped out. If you guys want to go to the next thing and come back and see if we can find her.
Let's do that. Next on the agenda, it's the consideration of charter authorizing panel decision for Lisa Academy, and that's Ms. Tracy Webb. I don't know if she's out in the hallway. There she is. Good morning, Ms. Webb. Welcome.
Good morning. Tracy Webb from the Charter Office. Today we have a consideration of a charter authorizing panel decision for Lisa Academy. They have requested to add a new campus for a hybrid school, additional waivers for the new campus, and to increase the enrollment cap. Lisa's charter was originally approved in 2004 and serves students in grades K-12. The enrollment cap for this year, I'm sorry, for this year is 3,432 students. So the decision for the board today is to review or not review the cap decision. I also want to clarify, on the list of waivers that are attached, those are new waivers for Lisa, in addition to what is already approved for the whole school. The waivers that are attached are just for the hybrid school.
Okay.
And today we do have Dr. Bogrick, he's on Zoom, if you have any questions.
Welcome, Dr. Bogrick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I'll start here with Ms. Newton. Do we have any questions or comments for Lisa Academy?
I just had two clarifying questions. The increase in the cap of 1,050, that was strictly for the hybrid?
Yes, just for the hybrid school.
Okay, and then the hybrid is going to be K-12 instead of K-9 next year?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was, that was all I had. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, and Dr. Moore?
I do, I, I don't plan to review, so I do have a few questions, if that's okay for you all. When you're planning this school, are your teachers going to be solely with this school? Or are there going to be some of the teachers at your existing school? And what will that relationship, teaching online and in person, look like?
So, Mr. Shahin? Can I answer this question? This is Shahin, I'm the Assistant Superintendent at Lisa Academy. So yes, we are going to have dedicated staff for hybrid, for the hybrid school.
Okay, I think this is a, a unique situation that probably was born out of this past year, and I think it's, it's a great opportunity that parents would be able to take advantage of that primarily online, but also having the site visits. If a parent was far enough in the state that they couldn't reach a site, would, could they still enroll in the program, or in the school?
So, yes, so, yes, they will still, they are going to be able to apply for our school. But one of our requirements to give a sense of belonging to our parents and to students is to come onsite. So we are going to ask our parents and students to come to our, either the Satellite Learning Services or Campus Learning Services twice a week, I'm sorry, once, twice a month or once a week. So they will be able to enroll, but they will need to come to the, to the learning center.
Okay. I think, I saw, I think it's great that you would provide lunches to those families. I think you're, you're ameliorating some of the concerns that we've had this year. And then my last question is, will technology be provided by you all for families that lack internet services?
So we are going to provide Chromebooks to all of our students. Also, if the parents have, don't have the, you know, internet service, we are going to provide Hotspots.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Chambers? No?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Woods? Okay, Ms. McFetrich?
Can you help me understand what your Satellite Learning Centers will be? Are they outside of your regular buildings that you now have?
Yes, so what we're going to do is, the first year, we are going to start, this is going to be a combination of virtual school and traditional learning. So we would like to reach out to as many families as we can in the state of Arkansas. So, we are going to start with Campus Learning Centers. So we are going to ask our students, students to come to onsite. And when we have enough application or interest in the other regions of Arkansas, then we are going to open Satellite Learning Centers. These Satellite Learning Centers are going to give services, like for example, enrichment services, support services, intervention services, or some of the services that cannot be given virtually, like occupational therapy or dyslexia, some portions of dyslexia. So we are going to, these learning centers, Satellite Learning Centers are going to be separate buildings. They're going to be usually office buildings, maybe churches or hotels, but a safe place for our students and for our teachers. I, I'm sorry, Ms. McFetrich, I, I cannot hear you, I think you are muted.
So you haven't identified the satellites buildings as yet, is that correct?
Not, not for the first year, no.
If I may, I'm Luann Barone, I'm Assistant Superintendent for Lisa Academy. Just to clarify that, for the first year, we plan to use campus, campuses that already exist for our learning centers. So in central Arkansas, we'll be using our building at 21 Corbett Hill Drive, which is where our sixth grade academy middle school is currently. We have additional space in that building that will be dedicated to the hybrid school administration. We'll also be using Springdale Campus on Holcomb Street, Street in Springdale, the first year. So the first year, we plan to operate out of those two locations as our learning centers. And then as we determine demand across the state, we will then look at facilities for those. And they will most likely be leased portions of buildings, as Mr. Shahin said, in churches, community centers, other safe locations where we can lease the space that we need to provide those services in those satellite areas.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Lookadoo? No? Okay. Well, if we have no further questions or comments, then I'll look for a motion. Okay, we have a motion to not review by Ms. McFetrich. Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, do we, did we find Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks so much, really appreciate you.
Oh, yes, thank, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you all for joining us today, congratulations.
Good morning, Amy Douglas with PLSB. Today we are here for a hearing, a state board review of an evidentiary hearing regarding educator Tiffany Gant. I have passed out to those that are present, I'm not sure if the email was forwarded by Ms. Williams this morning, but her attorney, Mr. Valley, is in court in Hernando, Mississippi, and is asking for a one-month continuance on this case. I have not spoken to Ms. Gant this morning, but he did send that email this morning, and I spoke to him yesterday. So whatever pleases the board.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments?
I know this is like the third or fourth time we've continued this. Is there any issue on the part of Ms. Gant? Is she currently teaching, or?
To my knowledge, she is not teaching, correct? She is not currently teaching.
Okay, so, what's the pleasure of the board?
It seems like we've continued it several times. I'm okay with continuing it one more, but I, I think this would probably be the last time that I would be willing to do that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I do think since she's hired an attorney, we need to let him be here for this.
Yeah. I would agree. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move to continue.
We have a motion by Ms. Woods to continue.
Can we?
I'm sorry, Ms. Chambers?
Does that motion include this is the last time we would continue?
Don't think you can do that. I, I wouldn't advise doing that, anyway. I mean, I'll just say, I mean, that, that could be the opinion, and, and that may be what y'all end up doing. But I would just, this action, I would suggest, just be a continuance. I think our, our folks at PLSB can contact Mr. Valley and make sure he understands the, the opinion, or the, the sense of the board, is that this has been extended several times, and it needs to be brought to a conclusion.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Woods, do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Newton. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
I will send him notice for the April 8th statement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gant, for joining us today. Okay. You're welcome. Okay, next we have consideration of approval to allow ADE-developed computer science and computing year-one courses to be caught, to be taught to eighth graders by any Arkansas public school district. All right, and then we have Mr. Anthony Owens presenting. Good morning, welcome.
Thank you, good morning, Anthony Owens, Arkansas Department of Education, Office of Computer Science. I'd like to start just first by saying congrats to Superintendent Moore, well-deserved honor, and it's been a pleasure for our office to work with him. On various projects over the past few years. By the way, I do like Cracker Barrel, if anybody wants to take me there. That said, I also want to quickly just let everybody know that we did announce our results of our all-region coding competition last Friday. So if you have not seen those, please go out and look at those. But I want to draw attention to one specific team. While I want to give accolades to all the students, this was the first year that we had a team of one student who made it into the top 17 teams across the state. So we were very impressed by this student, Braden Pierce from Bryant High School, who is also an Eagle Scout at Troop 17, Boy Scouts. So I didn't realize that until my wife pointed it out to me a couple days later. She's like, you know Braden? I'm like, oh, okay. So, by the way, I was not in the scoring. Another group does that, I just verify it, so. But congrats to all those teams, and they will progress to the state competition on May 1st of this year. So, good luck to each of them. That said, the motion before you that we're requesting today is that, this is not without precedence. Let me start by saying that. I brought to this board, not this particular board, but to the State Board of Education, the first time that we considered Algebra I for a blanket approval to be taught at eighth grade across the state without additional requirements placed on the school of filling out paperwork. We do have a process for this, where schools can already apply for each of these. And basically, they submit the information through our course approval system. And we look at it, and pretty much, as long as they have a teacher that they've indicated that is going to be a proper license, it's approved. There's no real in-depth look at what curriculum they're using or anything of that nature, because we don't have regulatory authority to do that. They have to teach the standards. So what we are asking is that all of our year-one courses that you all approved in December and January that come into effect this fall, would be automatically approved for any school district to offer to, to eighth-grade students without going through that course approval process. To be completely transparent, this is getting out in front of Senate Bill 107 a little bit. Senate Bill 107, language within that bill says that the ADE will identify at minimum four courses that will, that we will basically do this for, that we will say that can be taught to eighth graders without additional approval. We just went ahead and selected all nine of our first-year courses, because as you recall, our nine first-year courses that we developed all have the same set of standards. They're just taught through various lenses for that, for that first-year course. So it really wouldn't make sense to adopt four and not the other five. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We'll start with Mr. Lookadoo.
I don't have any questions, but I think this is good, and I'm excited to, to give those eighth graders that chance to earn that credit. I think that's, that's wonderful, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. We're, we're excited for this, because one, it will give schools additional flexibility in determining where, if Senate Bill 107 passes and is signed into law, where they establish that high school credit that will be required under that bill. But also, you know, eighth graders at early and earlier ages, our students are starting to determine their pathways in life. And I, you know, the Office of Computer Science believes that we should be allowing these students to start determining those high school credits when they, when they're ready for that and when they have enough knowledge to start making those decisions and where they want to go. And this provides them additional opportunities for those upper-level courses, for those students who want to go beyond just that first year.
Yeah. All right, Ms. McFetrich?
Thank you. Happy to do it, blessed to do it.
Ms. Woods?
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to tell you, I love every time I see you on our agenda. I think everything that you bring to us is very, very neat, and I'm, I'm thrilled to be a part of it.
Thank you, again, I'm, I'm very blessed to be where I am and happy to do it.
Ms. Chambers?
I love to see a technical person celebrated this way. It's awesome. I do love this, I'm dating myself, but they put something like this in place when I was a kid, and you could take math and science in eighth grade, you could start just what you said, and it accelerates the path. And actually, I think supports all the good, further supports all the good that we're trying to do in the state. So thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you. So, do you know, how many, do you think there are many middle schools that were prepared to teach these courses? What does that look like?
So, you know, the licensure will not change. The licensure requirements will still remain that they have, the teacher has to have the 528 computer science licensure, which is actually a 412 licensure range. We call it a high school licensure, but we put it that 412, that way any- That way, any teacher could test into it, if they can meet that content knowledge practices. So, they either have to have the 528, or 5016 Approval Code, or 5014 Technical Permit that has been around for, you know, four or five years now. We just launched a 5013 Technical Permit, which is open to classified staff members that have at least one year of experience directly with students, and they meet certain certification or training requirements, they can get a technical permit to teach the first-year courses only. So, what we see is, the potential of this is that a school that might have a technology resource teacher, or an IT person who has a background in technology, but they're at that middle school, they could go out and apply for this 5013 Technical Permit, and potentially be allowed to teach that at the middle school level. But, the licensure doesn't change for these, the licensure remains the same. To your question directly, because I know I didn't answer exactly what you asked, I think that this will not be extremely widely used initially, but I think as our schools start developing more and more pathways and options for students, and we start seeing an increase in interest by our communities and need by our industries, we're going to see schools starting fitting the needs of what our students have to what they're actually doing within the school. Also, just, it should be known that if a middle school does take this option at the eighth grade for a student, that does replace that student's coding block requirement. It also replaces those embedded CS-embedded standards requirement, because all those standards are already part of those year-one standards. So, it's not like we're just adding something to them. They're also able to take something off those students.
That was actually going to be my next question. Are there prerequisites, like, you know, could a student with no prior coding class enter these?
As a year-one course, they should be able to, yes.
And I think, I mean, I think it's a fantastic opportunity. There are sometimes concerns that students enroll in an eighth-grade course that will go on their transcript for college without realizing the gravity of that. Do you think this will be communicated well with counselors and those teachers, so students understand that going in?
You know, obviously, schools that elect to use this option, they're going to have to communicate to their schools the repercussions of this, you know, and we had one superintendent that was really stressing for this being an option for his school, which is part of the reason this legislation was revised to include this. But, he's looking at the, putting every eighth-grade student to meet that graduation requirement, but he said, "We're going to make sure my eighth-grade students know, if you don't pass in eighth grade, you're going to be taking another course in high school," which, I hope they take more courses in high school, anyway, but I just don't hope that they're repeat courses. I think our office and ADE can help, especially in our communication, when we put this out over Commissioner's memo, or whatever communication we have, that we stress the importance of reminding students that if they're utilizing this option, that it does have high school transcript repercussions.
Right, and do you foresee a large number of different places placing this on eighth grade? For that, I would want that to be a student choice at that point in time, when it's on a transcript.
We, as an office, aren't recommending it being mandatory for eighth graders. We are giving options to schools, and I don't know every school district's situation, or superintendent's situation, of how they're going to manipulate their schedule. They're may, or manipulate is not the best word, but finagle their schedule for students. But, we believe that, one, yes, we believe every student should have at least one Computer Science credit before they graduate, as the Senate Bill 107 outlines, but we also believe that students should have some flexibility, and schools have flexibility of how they implement that graduation requirement, which is part of this request.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Moore, this gives me an opportunity to plug what we've been plugging for several years now, is our student success plans.
Yeah.
These are decisions that should be made, especially for eighth graders, in conjunction with that development of the student success plan that we expect every student to have by eighth grade. So, you know, those are the conversations that you're talking about, that they would need to be made to understand, and the parents, or guardians, that, hey, this is, it gets real here, because you're talking about high school credit and transcripts. I would just point out, Ms. Chambers, you made a comment about technical, and it's very true. But, many of you may not know, Anthony is a good example, Mr. Owens is a good example of somebody who has a great passion and expertise in computer science, and obviously pushing this initiative to levels that I don't think anyone really expected in 2015, when we started this. But, he's also an attorney, you know, he's been to law school, he's been a teacher, you know, so, the point is, and I've tried to explain this to some school leaders that may not understand why we are wanting a required graduation credit for computer science. It's because, in the world we're in now, we want students to be prepared for what they're going into. It doesn't mean we want them all to be a computer, you know, app developers, game developers, game designers, programmers. It's, you know, when you have a house built now, and everything in that house can be controlled through an app from your phone, you need to understand, at a basic level, how some of those things work, especially when it comes to your finances and cybersecurity and all those things. I mean, it's like, we want, we don't expect all of our students to be experts in math when they graduate. But, we do expect them to have a basic level of understanding in those math concepts that we've outlined as a state. Same, and that's the concept here, Governor's idea on computer science. It's giving them that basic ground-level understanding, and it is flexibility. So, providing this for eighth graders is flexibility that is, as Anthony said, not without precedent. But, we see it as an opportunity, though, too, with 400 to 800 million jobs that will be going away due to automation over the next decade or so, according to McKinsey. You know, what are the, how are those, those jobs are going away, but they will be replaced. What will they be replaced with? And who will the workers be, and what skills will they need to replace the workers that are, you know, are moving out? And it's this type of thing. It's, you know, you look at this list, and data science, cybersecurity, networking, robotics, mobile app development, you know, those are the things that our young people need to have that understanding of, and then maybe generate the interest in moving on into the deeper learnings in those fields.
Thank you, Secretary, well said.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know, it's been a lot of work on your part, and it's exciting for our state. One of the things that I've thought about all through this is the demand for computer science teachers is probably through the roof in districts. You know, there's just not enough people to go around. And so, one of the things that you said just a few minutes ago, that is one of my husband's favorite sayings, first I ever heard of that, is that 5013 Technical Permit, and that's exciting to me, because I think that most districts have an IT person. You know, there's very few districts that don't have somebody on staff. And so, that's kind of exciting that that would open that door for a district to be able to, you know, have someone on staff to be able to get these classes taught. My question, though, is, are you seeing much, because the teachers are in such high demand, and no, it's not till next year, so you may not even know yet, is there much sharing between districts of a teacher? You know, there's one teacher, and they're in such high demand, maybe two or three districts might go together and share that teacher. Are you seeing any of that?
So, we have not seen empirical evidence of that yet. We have had discussions with various schools that have inquired if that's an option. Of course, that remains an option for them. The legislation does require the school district to employ a teacher as a district employee, a certified teacher, but that doesn't have to be their only duty, that doesn't have to be their only certification. And it doesn't also say they have to be only an employee of that district, but they have to employ a certified CS teacher. I think those are things that, as Ms. Frino's team, and our office, and the Secretary's office works through rule promulgation, once this legislation, if it's passed, those are the types of questions that we're going to need to clearly outline what that means, what, and of course, those rules, I'm pretty sure have to come back to y'all for consideration at some point. But, those are things that we're already talking about internally, considering what this looks like within a school. We don't want this to be an extreme burden on any school. This needs to be looked at as an opportunity for all of our students and all of our schools. And there was one senator, and I apologize for not remembering his name, but I was watching the Senate Bill 107 vote, and I think Secretary may reference this here in a second. But, he held this booklet up, and he turned to the page in it that shows the discrepancy between male and female enrollment, where we're at 28%. And he asked Senator English, he said, "Senator English, I'm looking at this, and this is saying that only 28% of our enrollment at a high school level is female. Is that not a perfect reason of why we should pass this bill?" And I thought that was the best question that was asked all day, because it, once again, demonstrates that CS is an equalizer for our students, but we have the responsibility of making sure that they have equal access to it across the board.
And on the communication front, what kind of communication are you doing to districts and teachers, and getting it down to their level on the different avenues for certification? And I'm sure there's support at the state level for them, first, sometimes there's financial barriers and different things. What kind of communications are you doing on that level?
So, our team, you know, we have the team of nine CS specialists, that I can't brag on them enough, because without them, this initiative, you know, it's not me, it's, you know, it's really the team that has got out there and moved us from around about fifty certified teachers in 2015 to over 550 now certified teachers across Arkansas. And it's that team that continues to build those numbers. We're looking at our summer training this summer, which we provide free of charge to teachers. We don't charge anything for any of the training. If an educational consortium has a fee, we reimburse that educational consortium, so the school's not even having to pay them for that. We have three of those high school trainings, and I'm pretty sure I can go ahead and speak to this a little bit, because I think the Secretary has mentioned it previously. The Secretary has authorized funding, SR2 funding, to establish a Computer Science Educator Academy. We're preparing, we're finalizing RFP and communications that will go out about that within the next couple weeks. We are, we will be looking for a post-secondary partner to award post-secondary graduate credit for teachers that go through that. That will be a free resource. Now, we're looking at whether we can pay travel and things of that nature, but the training itself is going to be free. The other thing that my team did, we were the first unit that I'm aware of last year that shifted all of our trainings to an online model. And so, we were able to reach teachers across the state where they were. This summer, we are switching back to some face-to-face, but instead of going to every single co-op across the state and providing every training face-to-face to everyone, we're picking different areas, and then we're making hybrid instructional models. So, we'll have face-to-face with a group that is appropriate, under COVID guidelines, whatever they may be at that point. And then, we will provide that training with support staff on the Zoom platform for people who can't be there face-to-face, maybe because they have health issues, or just travel, or whatever. So, our office is really responsive to trying to meet teachers where they are, and not let finance be a barrier to teachers in any form or fashion.
That's great, thank you, thank you.
Just, I just want to echo everybody else, and just let you know, anything that we can do to help in the digital divide, in underserved community, through the churches, or whatever, please feel free to call on our support. I do recognize that is an issue, as we're out in what I do daily, in underserved communities, that it's just not putting, just not getting deliverables there, but having support to execute deliverables, you know, with the technology. So, anything that I can do to assist anywhere in the state, please feel free to call on me.
Thank you, sir. And I will mention on that thread, because I didn't mention it earlier, about the Teacher Academy. We are part of that, and all the details haven't been finalized, but we are allowing priority application status to areas with the most need, and also, both in needing an individual or individuals to teach in that area, but also, the most need socio-economically.
I want to echo what Secretary mentioned, because oftentimes, even the communities don't understand the strategic plan, as he mentioned, the importance, and that's why sometimes going through churches and other educational entities that's there every week, you know, rather than just once a semester to make those announcements, to reemphasize the goals and objective of what this technology enhancement is going to do for their children long-term. I think that creates a sustainability model to support your goals through those underserved communities. So, I appreciate that, anything that we can do, please let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and I would love to have a follow-up conversation with you, because we're always looking at ways to reach our parents and students more directly. One more thing before whatever happens. I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Lori Frino. There were a lot of people that worked on the Computer Science Advancement Act legislation. The Secretary mentioned that I am a lawyer, but they call it practicing law, at least, and I don't get to practice a whole lot. But, Ms. Frino has been a great resource, and honestly, a great colleague in a lot of this work that we do, because I'm ignorant on a lot of stuff. I'm a bar-certified attorney, I'm a member of the Arkansas Bar, have been for five years, but because I'm not in a position that practices on a regular basis, there's a lot of it that I'm ignorant about. So, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Frino, for her support and her helping guide me through some of this.
I think it was a pleasure to be involved all this time.
We are definitely fortunate to have Ms. Frino part of the team here. We appreciate her expertise and her keen eye, so, it's definitely good to have her on that project as well. And I just want to say, I just think this is awesome, that we are, as you said before, meeting people where they are, as we're talking about meeting the teachers where they are. This is an opportunity to meet students where they are. As a parent of four, you realize that your students, your kids, they all have different levels of where they are, and different talents and skills, and things that they gravitate more to. So, I think this is just an opportunity for students to succeed. It's just another opportunity to meet children where they are, for those that are ready to jump in at eighth grade and get those courses out of the way, because that's just something that they can do. Rather than holding them back and making them wait as other students would, we are giving them the opportunity to succeed at an earlier age and an earlier grade. So, I appreciate all the work that has gone into it, and looking forward to the dividends and the benefits that our state will get from this. So, thank you so much to the team, and to you as well. And with that, if we don't have any other questions or comments, then I will look for a motion.
I would move to approve the computing year-one courses to be taught to eighth graders. And Anthony, you'll always be technical to me.
Thank you, ma'am, happy to be so. I don't care what you call me, as long as you call me.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Chambers. Seconded by Ms. McFetrich, a motion to approve. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you, Ms. Owens.
Thank y'all so much, I'm blessed.
You, too. Okay, well, with that, lunch is ready. So, what we'll do is, we'll stop, take a break, and we will meet back here at 1:00 and move on to our second part of our action agenda. So, we'll convene until 1:00. So we'll convene until 1:00.
Welcome back. We're going to call this meeting back to order for our one o'clock section of our action agenda. I think we've got everybody back on, online and everyone's back in the room. Glad to see some new faces. Ms. McAdoo, good to see you again. And I see we have some more guests on, so I'm sure they'll be introduced later, but welcome. And we're glad to see y'all, glad to have you today. Okay, so we are at new business. Is there any new business? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the next session at reports. And that's Mr. Joel Look- Lookadoo with our Arkansas Teacher of the Year report. Mr. Lookadoo?
All right, well, excited to get this afternoon started. And I do have some awesome people with me today. So I will actually be letting them kind of introduce themselves as they go through our report together. And so in the agenda, you'll see, and I've talked with some here about it, but you'll see our report that we have been working on as a group. And that is who is here with us today. We've been meeting and kind of over the course of this year. And so I'm going to let them start us off. And Christian Saavedra, who is a teacher and the head men's soccer coach at Rogers Heritage High School, is going to kick us off here, talking a little bit about our report. So Christian, I'll hand it off to you and let you go.
Thank you. Hey, good afternoon. My name is Christian Saavedra, and I'm a Spanish one teacher, as well as the head coach for the boys soccer program at Rogers Heritage High School, in the same district where I graduated high school. Before you is our Teach Plus Arkansas Advisory Board. We are a diverse group of educators who teach in central Arkansas, the Arkansas Delta region and northwest Arkansas. Students in our classrooms come from a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds, go to school in many educational settings, including school districts and charters, and live in urban and rural communities. We're passionate about ensuring that all students are taught by diverse educators. A diversified staff is important because research shows that all children benefit from having educators in school who represent their communities' racial, cultural, and linguistic diversity. We believe that recruiting and retaining educators of color should be a priority for districts across Arkansas, particularly those districts whose workforce has remained largely white despite shifts in student diversity. This is why we wanted to learn from teachers of color across the state to better understand what is happening and provide recommendations to districts. Today, we want to share what we heard with you. Based on our focus groups with teachers of color from across the state, there's clear work that districts and leaders can do to improve their focus on recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce. You see, my story is very similar to my students. I grew up in El Salvador and arrived in the U.S. at 13 years old. And my success is a product of the support that Rogers Public School educators provided for me. And as I think of my journey, I can't help to feel grateful for the teachers that went above and beyond to ensure that I properly adapted to my new environment. Having a teacher of color as a role model empowered me to imagine a world in which I was enough and I was capable of achieving my dreams. I once read that you can't accomplish what you can't imagine. And then my wish is that most students coming to my classroom will have the right guidance and motivators to continue to imagine a better future for themselves like I did. My colleagues today will share a bit more about Teach Plus, the organization that helped us think about teacher diversity, our work this past year listening to educators of color, our findings, and why we think the State Board of Education should continue to seek out ways to encourage districts to focus on diversifying the teacher workforce. My colleague Pamela Chris will speak a little more about Teach Plus.
Thank you, Christian. Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Chris. I'm a Teach Plus Arkansas Advisory Board member. I'm also a district literacy coach with the Little Rock School District. And I'm also an adjunct and an upheld instructor at the Leonard Smith College with the teacher education. I'm going to tell you more about the Teach Plus Arkansas. As Christian mentioned, the group of educators before you came together to be an educator advisory board for Teach Plus Arkansas. Teach Plus is a national nonprofit focused on empowering excellent experience and diverse teachers to take leadership over key policy and practice issues that advance equity, opportunity, and student success. Teach Plus grows teachers as leaders, and we have worked this past year to better understand policy in Arkansas. Currently, Teach Plus is in 12 states and Arkansas being the newest. This past year, we met twice a month to learn about Arkansas policy, met with education and legislative leaders, and we learned how to use our voice to influence decision makers through storytelling, research, and providing concrete policy recommendations. Teach Plus believes that when we invest in developing our most talented teachers and to teacher leaders who are well-informed, they're persuasive, and they are prepared to leave, they have that deep leverage in advancing equity for students, especially students of color, low-income students, and those students from underserved communities. This program has absolutely empowered us to encourage change at the state and district level. And we hope to be a part of better solutions moving forward. So now I would like to introduce Stacy McAdoo.
Hello, everyone. It is good to see you guys again. I am Stacy McAdoo, your forever 2019 Arkansas Teacher of the Year. Christian started off by talking a little bit about the need for diversity in our state and how the population is changing and growing. Well, each day, the student population in Arkansas schools grow more racially and linguistically diverse. According to the most recent published data, youth of color in our school districts make up about 40% of the public school student population, but only about 12% of our teachers identify as a teacher of color. And as recently as earlier this school year, only 68 districts in the state, well, 68 districts in the state do not have one single teacher of color employed as a teacher of record. So armed with that data and our lived experiences, we conducted focus groups with teachers of color from around the state to solicit their thoughts about their experiences and ideas on ways to improve diversity as it relates to recruitment and retention of teachers of color. Our findings were pretty consistent with what we already knew and what we have heard from teachers of color across the United States. First of all, they feel like their talents and their voices are underutilized, and they want to be listened to and to have their expertise, expertise valued. They also feel like they have, there's been a lot of superficial diversity work being done in education, and they would like to have more meaningful professional development for school leaders and teachers about diversity and not just a one-time, one-shot, here's what it is type of learning environment. They are also, a lot of them felt like they were stuck or boxed into certain roles and responsibilities, and they would like to have access to support and resources that will help them to become teacher leaders or assume leadership roles. And finally, they want to see the needle move a little bit more, not a little bit, a lot more in terms of representation. They want more successful efforts with recruiting and interviewing and the hiring practices in the process to get more educators of color, not just in the school buildings, but at all levels within the education system. Taquina is going to talk to you a little bit next about some specific recommendations.
Thank you, Stacy. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Taquina Watson. I am a member of the Teach Plus Advisory Board here in Arkansas. I'm a Nois education fellow, and I'm a first-year teacher at Kip Delta. I teach eighth grade math. So as Stacy was saying, there was a lot of findings, and we found out a lot of information about what educators and what teachers actually in the field want. They want explicit commitment. So it's one thing for us to continue to have these conversations about diversity, but it's another thing for diversity to be implemented in the goals, implemented in like public propaganda statements that the schools say. So teachers want actions behind these statements we continue to make, or that districts continue to make. Another thing, as Stacy was saying, educators want to be listened to, empowered, and valued by their school. They want opportunities to move up the ladder within education. They want opportunities to lead their school, opportunities to receive feedback, informal and formally. One of the best practices, I'll say a quote from my paper. "One of the best practices for creating a supporting and affirming school culture for teachers of color is giving teachers an open space to be heard." So within the space of being heard, you're able to create those policy changes that teachers need to be more successful in their classroom. So another recommendation from us is to prioritize funding for this development, for this equity training, for this implicit bias training, for this anti-racist training at all levels. So teachers shouldn't, should not be the only people who are having anti-racist training. It should be the entire school district going through anti-racist training, and we need to allocate the funds for that to happen. So our fourth recommendation will go into developing pathways for teachers of colors, color to become leaders in those spaces. So again, what students see, they begin to do. And so when we put teachers of color in those spaces, we're opening those doors for our students, and again, furthering them to believe it's possible. In-house membership, I mean mentorship, funding and incentives, and partnering with other high-quality programs. So maybe the school may not have the resources for those teachers, but partnering with other high-quality programs. And our last recommendation was for districts to actually design and implement protocols for better hiring in HR and engage in diverse practices that rely on research and campus committees. And so this leads me into us talking about the importance of valuing teacher voices and talking a little bit about schools who have actively made changes. Rogers School District has already committed to addressing their practices and making them more diverse and being active participants in this change that we want to make. And so then we'll shift into why is, why is it even important? And so then we'll shift into why is, why is it even important that we listen to teacher voices? Imagine being a parent and you have a child, and someone keeps trying to tell you what your child's favorite food is, but you spend the most time with that child. You feed that child, you clothe that child. Long story short, you're with that child most of the day. And so you get the needs of that child firsthand. And so as teachers, we're with students about at least forty hours a week off and on. And so teachers should be heard and the needs of students should be heard. They spend about more time at the school than they may at home. And so with that, we'll transition into the next part of our paper.
So first off, I want to say thank you to each of you being, being a little bit flexible with our, our time and holding off so that we can get everybody on here. But as we kind of bring this to a close, I wanted to, to share a quick personal story to explain why we believe this is such an important topic. You know, the research is out there and it's clear of, on the importance of diversity and representation in the teaching profession, and we know that. But it's still so easy to become comfortable with, you know, the way things are, the way things have been, or even just to get in that bubble with the people that we know and we regularly interact with. And as you, you all know, last fall, I started a podcast, and I was about six episodes in. And I was really proud of the work we were doing. It was, it was going well. I thought we had great guests on from, you know, not only in Arkansas but across the nation. I was excited and put a little graphic together of all the, the different guests we had had on in those first six episodes. And looking at that picture, my wife was the first to point this out. She looked at it, looked at me, and was like, this is awfully white. And she was right, right? Like she, she was a hundred percent right. And the next day, I actually got a phone call from Stacy, Stacy McAdoo, and she said, hey, are you going to have any, any black people on your podcast? And I needed, I needed to hear that from her. And in that moment, it really hit me of how important it is to remain intentional about our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because here I am, I'm a person who deeply believes in the importance of diversity and inclusion. I believe I'm an advocate for my students who have, who are mostly students of color. I'm in an educational policy group with, with, you know, Teach Plus, focusing on teacher diversity, yet how easy it is for us to, you know, remain in that bubble. And, you know, I had these, these great guests on, and they were all fantastic, but they were all of my same race. And, you know, I think my own example of that is really, it's kind of, it's gut-wrenching for me to, to point that out, but it goes to show how we must remain vigilant in supporting teachers of color. And this is why we, as a group, you know, we, we ask districts and implore districts and the department and the board that we do listen to our educators of color. And, you know, much like we've seen the importance of parent engagement and listening to, to our parents, our communities, we've got to do the same and engage our teachers of color and, and know that we've got to be purposeful with those commitments to diversifying the teacher workforce. And so we know there is, there's good work being done on this front, and we hope to see a continued and, and growing commitment and intentionality there. And because there's, there's so much value in listening to one another so that we can act and respond to create a better place together. So thank you all for, for listening, and we are happy to answer any questions about our work with the, the report or with Teach Plus in general, too. And we have on with us, who did not speak there, but Dr. Carrie Moll, who has been kind of our fearless leader in organizing everything as, as we've been all virtual meetings this year, working with this group. But it's, it's been great, and a big thank you to all of them. But I'll, I'll open it up if there's any questions or anything.
Joel, the, the link, it looks like a link there at the bottom of the, the last slide. Is that, can that be made available and we can get it all?
It's the same, it is the same link that is on.
Okay.
Joel, could you take the slide share down, please? I just want to thank you. I, I think this presentation is excellent and timely and encouraging. In terms of where change comes from, it starts with all of us individually, without question. But where we're looking to put emphasis for change, and you talked about Rogers, and I'm so proud of what you're doing there. Does it start within the district? Is that where it's coming? And how does, how does your, your organization, how do your leaders, how are you helping bring that about, that intentionality? And do you have any call-outs for the board specifically?
And I'll let, I'll let anyone jump in, group, anyone who wants to, to go on.
I'll go ahead and jump in on that. Yeah, so, you know, I, I think as I was preparing for this presentation, I wanted to make sure that I was honest and I was critical at the same time because I think I needed to look back and make sure that I wasn't just repeating what has been told to me for years. And if you can tell by my accent, I, I literally a product of what happens when people tell you that you can be something than you can ever dream of. And if you ever have some free time, I would challenge you to Google some of the obstacles that kids have growing up in a, in a third-world country. And somehow, through the mentorship, through the programs, through the sports involvement, I was able to get here at a thirteen-years-old and, and still believe in myself enough and change some of the things that I had learned growing up. And I'm able to sit in this meeting today and feel privileged to be now giving the voice to the students that are coming behind me. And some of the examples that I can give you where Rogers has empowered me to be a leader has been anytime, you know, we say all the time about having an open-door policy, right? And I think me as a head coach of a program, I, I want to say that, that that's always true. But realistically speaking, we all have our agendas that we go with. And, and I, what I can vouch for, for Rogers is that they genuinely do. They genuinely listen to their teachers. And, and I can, I can talk about my experience, whether it is, you know, I hear of a teacher in Dallas that I know is from the area, and I know we need a third-grade teacher to hire, and I just pick up the phone and, and call downtown and say, hey, I have a diverse teacher that it's maybe worth considering. If I can get her to apply, would you, would you listen to her interview? And to your point earlier, Susan, I think it's, it does start within us, right? And so that's the power in empowering more people of diverse backgrounds is that we know how people get jobs. We know how people get into those positions that we all have. And so how I feel like our district is doing a good job is when we do bring solutions to the table, one, they listen, but two, they genuinely have a passion. Our leaders that I've encountered in my district have a passion for meeting the kids' needs. The other example I'll give you is, as I started this project, I was, I'm very careful with what I do with, in my position where I am now because I want to make sure that I don't miss the opportunity to make a higher platform for the future generations. And so I make sure that to call downtown and Dr. Hill and, and make sure that he knew I'm diving into this project. It might be a critical piece that we put together. I want to make sure you're aware before you read it that I'm going to do this. And I'm not, you know, I wasn't really calling to ask for permission because that's just not the human that I am. I do things that I'm passionate about. However, I wanted him to know before anything came out that this was a project that I was about to start. And within seconds, you know, I left a voicemail, and within seconds, I get a phone call back. Christian, I'm, I'm so happy to hear that you're doing that, using your voice. Whatever you do, as soon, as soon as it gets published, send it to me. We'll have a conversation, let's schedule a meeting, let's talk about it. And then, and I asked him on that because I'm ambitious. I said, man, can you make a, a commitment now, like today? I don't want to wait until tomorrow until the research comes out, to do something about it because you know it's true and you know you're saying to me that, that we do need it. And he said, man, well, what, what ideas do you have? And then he shared with me a video idea on using and highlighting teachers of color in the district to use that to recruit more teachers. And so, but a month and a half ago, the videographer for the school was in my classroom recording a promotional video to recruit more teachers of color. And that's just two, a couple of simple examples that I can give you on how I feel confident to come into this meeting and know that where I am, I'm valued and, and I do have a voice and I'm making a change. And I do believe that it starts within ourselves, but then within our districts.
I just want to thank each presenter. It's so important that you're here with your, your voice and your stories. And I, I mean, Secretary Key, I, I can't think of anything that we've talked about in my six years on the board that, that I am more passionate about and wanting to be supportive of. And I know it's so important that we go about this in a way where it's happening locally within communities, but fully understanding how can the board help? How do we, how, I think I read somewhere, is it forty percent of our students are, are students of color? So we're talking about every community in the state, and how can we, how can we allow our best selves to come to bear on this? And what is the role of the board? And I know we're probably not prepared to speak to that today, but would love to hear how we can help lift and support what these communities and these individuals with Teach Plus are doing.
Ms. Chambers, I think maybe it was February or maybe it was Jan, I think it was January, we started that conversation. If y'all recall the presentation, Carly Saracini talked about our recruitment and retention plan. And, you know, right now, under state law, districts have a responsibility for a minority recruitment plan, which is, you know, if you read it, it's very much older thinking, you know? It's not modern thinking as far as what we need to do. And it was also limited that, to, to districts that had a certain percentage of minorities enrollment. And, you know, really, there was only one district or two, a very few, number of districts left that, that didn't meet that threshold. So we are working right now with Senator James Sturch from a educator himself on drafting and filing an update to that plan. I, I, I think, Joel, y'all may have had some input in that or at least some conversations. So just to your point, Ms. Chambers, there, yeah, there is some work being done now on that topic and that, developing those plans. And the idea is, under the old methodology, it was a year-to-year-to-year situation. You don't plan from year to year. I mean, you have a plan for the year, but if you really want to have a robust plan, you have to look out at, at trends, you have to look out at the realities of, of your student populations and how those things are changing. And so now we're looking at more of a three-year, I believe it, well, Carly will be here later and she can correct me, but I, I think it's a, a three-year approach where it's not a compliance issue as it had been in the past. It's more of a, a true plan of how are, how are we going to do this? And what are we going to, and there she is, she appears. So I would be happy for, for her to weigh in on this, but we're talking about recruitment and retention. Okay, good, good. But yeah, there is work that's happening now and, and certainly what, I think this presentation today, there, there are many of these elements that I think you will see in that updated legislation.
Joel, if I may, thank you. I did have the pleasure of guiding and mentoring these amazing educators. I think we, we all understand that our, our policy recommendations are solely district-based. But the ability to elevate, you know, the district advocacy that each of these teachers are going to be doing in their own district, they each have a plan to go back and engage with their leadership and have specific ideas based on their specific context of what they would like to encourage each of their districts to be able to do. We knew that having an ability with, with Joel's time here to elevate the conversation here at the state board level and make the commitment that we're wholly supportive of, of the state board continuing to focus on this and hopefully in the future be able to bring additional state-level policy recommendations to you.
Saracini, did you want to, do you have something to say?
I was just going to say it was three years, is correct. Carly Saracini. It is three years. And, you know, we have a whole recruitment and retention unit now. And we are trying to get out there and really work with the individual districts. And we are calling it Operation Lee County right now. But we are physically going out there and working with, with the district. And we're looking at, you know, a short-term goal would be to really recruit diversity, but at the same time, you're going to have to do the greater ones. So you have to do that short and that long term, and that's what we're trying to do. And on the thirtieth, actually, the Wysser, Wysser unit and myself, we're going back from four to six to open it up to the community to advise the part routes could be for them. So we are making those strides, and we hope that we can take that to scale after we see success.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, and I guess the last thing that I would like to add is that as you are going about and revising the policy at the state level, consider us, think about us if you are in need of any type of assistance. We've been doing the research, we've been talking with teachers, we've done focus groups. We would love to continue this work at a larger level with you all. So we are here and we are, are and can be and are willing to be resources for you all as well.
Thank you, Ms. McAdoo. Do we have any more, Ms. McVittrick?
This is a great report, and I really appreciate all of your work on this. I could see where it would be beneficial to make a presentation to the Arkansas School Board Association and really help educate those school board members out there on this. Reading through the report, I love the idea of setting those goals on, on hiring and really working with the leadership. I could really see the need for this. And again, I really appreciate all your work, and it's good to see you again, Ms. McAdoo. Thank you.
Ms. Woods, did you have anything to say?
I do not, no.
Okay. Dr. Moore? Ms. Newton?
I just wanted to thank everyone for their hard work on this. And, and I, I kind of want to echo what Ms. McVittrick just said. You know, I, I hate to see it stop here, and so I would love to see your work continue on, and there are lots of groups out there that, that need to hear this and, and it become more than just a report and be an avenue for conversations all across the state. And so I know that we're coming up on symposium sessions and PD sessions and all sorts of opportunities. So I hope that different groups are listening. Joel, you'll be a great person that maybe can do some scheduling for, for the group to get this message out because, you know, communication, you know, I think Mr. Key said, where I want to go, we don't want to shut down communication. We, we've got to keep those, keep talking and moving and because communication will lead to action. And so, so again, I want to say my thanks. And I think, I think that one of the things that struck me, not just the data, but it was something that Mr. Savidge said while I go is you can't become what you can't imagine, you know? And that's a sad state for our kids across the state. We can't let that continue. So, so thank you for your work and I, I, anything I can do to help. But I, I hope that you, y'all won't stop here with us, that you'll continue in getting this message out.
Dr. Hill?
I just want to echo the board and let you know, your intentionality is so critical as, as you've mentioned and, and recognizing that. There was just an article I read the other, yesterday, and it said diverse teams feel less comfortable, and that's why they perform better. And it's amazing when, you know, when as a team, it's that friction that, you know, that drives you, and you never grow in your comfort zone. And sometimes you have to make yourself become uncomfortable to advance the agenda holistically. And so I appreciate that, is what you mentioned, the intentionality, because those are specific things and, you know, and having goals to be inclusive. You know, inclusivity is, is just so incredibly important for, for identifiable role models as we look at a diverse population that we're serving, for young people to be able to look up and, and see themselves. I mean, I, I can't imagine, I mean, I, I knew when I wanted to, you know, a head football coach that that Tony Dungy was somebody that I aspired to be like and because I saw myself in him when I was in the military, Colin Powell was somebody that I aspired to, because, you know, I said, "I can get there," you know, and so, that intentionality is so important and I appreciate you doing that and the work you're doing, anything that I can assist in and in your endeavor, please feel free to.
I echo everything that my colleagues have said and we appreciate all of the work and brain power that goes into being intentional as we're talking about and searching out those different ways that we can help our students to be as successful as possible. And a huge part of that is having, as he said, Dr. Hill said, identifiable role model, someone that looks and sounds like me is so important for a child's psyche and for their, for their growth. And it goes back to what we talked about before as far as, education is not just academic. It should hit so many different avenues of a child and it should be holistic in its approach. And it's so important for that, for a child to be able to identify and not just identify at more basic levels, but as Christian said before, on those higher levels and give children something to aspire to and to look up to. So, I appreciate all of the work that you all are doing and I think it's so important for us to look into and consider the teachers' perspectives. And as Ms. Saracini said, it's going to be that dual role of what we can do right now and then also thinking long-term for the future. And I think that grow your own role is, that model is going to be so important to reach people in your community and to elevate the profession of education to where the people that are in our communities aspire to be educators in their, in their communities and stay in their communities and partner with all of the stakeholders that are involved, the business leaders. I think it's going to be really important for business leaders and community leaders to listen to future teachers about what they would like to see in their communities. What's going to make me stay here? Because we know that's a large part of that teacher turnover is that, you know, it's just, there's not really much to do in this town. So, so, a lot of times, we lose teachers because there's just not what they need to live their lives and for their families in that community. So, once again, it goes back to that, that community engagement piece where all of the stakeholders in the area are working together so that we can grow our own teachers and retain them and give them a fruitful and enjoyable life where they are, so that we can multiply that and keep it going in that community. So, once again, thank you so much for your help and the research that you're doing and the work that you're doing where you are and anything that we can do to help and perpetuate that, we're definitely willing to do that. Thank you. All right. So, if not, that's it. We appreciate Mr. Lookadoo and we appreciate all of you. Thank you all for joining us today. It was great to meet you, great to see you. So, we'll move on to our next part of the agenda, which is, oops. State Board of Education Members Reports. So, I'll start with Ms. Chambers. Do you have anything to refer, okay, Ms. Woods? Ms. McFetrich? Dr. Moore? Ms. Newton? And Dr. Hill stepped away for a moment. Okay. I don't have anything new right now, so we'll just move on to our commissioners' reports. So, Secretary Key?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are going to start the commissioners' report today with Carly Saracini and Dr. Pride. They have been doing some work that I think you're going to find very exciting. It's a task force that they're working through with, truly on a national level, but the work that it's, that they're doing is going to have a big impact on our state and support for teachers. So, I'll just let them take it away.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Tiffany Pride, Assistant Commissioner of Learning Services. And of course, as Secretary Key said, Carly Saracini and I are going to be presenting today. And so, we are delighted to share Desi's participation in the Council of Chief State School Officers, which we will reference as CCSO, Instructional Materials and Professional Development Network. And, you know, Desi, we understand that high-quality instructional materials are an important lever and that it provides our students with great appropriate assignments, it influences teachers' instruction, sets the bar for expectations, and it's important, and most of all, it supports student engagement. And we also know that schools are unable to increase access to these resources at scale if the use of high-quality instructional materials are not coupled with a clear vision. That includes professional development and training that is grounded in those resources. And so, we are here to share the work that we're doing in this network. All right. And we have here our vision and mission, and I'm sure you know this very well, we put this here because the work that we're doing with, in partnership with CCSO in the IMPD Network, it helps us to further our vision and mission. This work is student-focused and it provides us with, you know, strategic plans to better guide and support our schools in selecting high-quality instructional materials. And so, today, what we want to do, and we've kind of already started that, is to explain the purpose of the IMPD Network, identify our theory of action, establish connections that already exist to our state supports. And so, we know we don't want this work to seem like another thing, but something that's already integrated into school improvement processes. We'll explain why IMPD matters, identify some outcomes, targets, and key priorities and next steps. And so, Carly and I will kind of switch in and out on different pieces.
In your thinking, learning services and educator effectiveness, well, we want this to be a seamless, where it's K through 12 and also all of our education prep programs, so that our candidates will leave those programs with those skills for high-quality instructional materials to be able to have the knowledge and tools to select those. So, we have been doing this with some other groups and going around and we're not going to do this little activity, but this is just an activity that we do to kind of give us, what do you think high-quality instructional materials, what do they mean to you? And so, we have gotten a lot of feedback and we're keeping the feedback so that we can go back and look at where we were when we first presented to the very end of our timeline of where we want to be and where we're going. And so, our vision is to make sure and ensure that all students across the state have that equitable access to those highly qualified, quality materials that are grade-level appropriate for instruction and include those responsive practices that are just so important to give those opportunities to our students to reach those college and career life goals. And then, we want to make sure that our Arkansas educators have that strong foundation and that pedagogical content knowledge and readiness to identify what is HQIM, and you'll hear us say that, that's that high-quality instructional materials, and how to implement it. So, we want to make sure that our teachers and our future teachers have those tools and resources to not only identify them, but also implement them into their practices. So, here is how we, as Arkansas, have defined HQIM. It's those curriculum materials that are aligned, of course, to our state academic standards that include those evidence-based strategies, those inclusive practices, and we want to ensure that it's embedded in our teacher support systems. We want that high-quality instructional materials to take in account the need and the diversity that we just spoke about for our students, that we meet our students where they need to be met and be that culturally responsiveness lens when we choose the materials we choose in order to teach. And so, that's why it's so important. And of course, we want to set, make sure that we have expectations that meet as they look at curriculum and materials, that we all have high quality and what does that meet expectations look like? And that's where we will help them have the criteria to look at to choose the right materials to utilize in their classroom. And so, we are going to use those ed reports, which is just one thing that we will base it on, but we will have other criteria as we bring in stakeholders and those voices. And I know TLAG is coming up at the end of this month, I know you've got your invitation. So, we do want to bring in those teacher voices and we have heard that they want to be part of it. And so, that's why it's across the agency to different, so that we are getting that voice. Then again, our theory of action is if we establish this across the state and support this model, then we can accelerate that teaching and learning by leveraging these high-quality instructional materials. And then, that's how we can incentivize those LEAs to adopt it and want to adopt it and make sure those teachers are supported with training and coaching so they can not only skillfully select, but also implement and use. And if our EPPs, which are those educator prep programs, which is higher ed and some of our routes, we want to make sure that this is aligned to their competencies so that they can leave those programs well-grounded in what is a high-quality instructional material. And then, that will cause all students in Arkansas to have teachers who are prepared to engage them in learning with these high-quality instructional materials. And I think it goes back to Dr. Pride.
So, thank you, Carly. So, the next piece of this is that we know that what we teach, it matters. And as Desi joined the IMPD Network, the research really began to lift those important things that are necessary for this work. It's evident in the research that what we teach matters. And this quote here from John Hopkins Institute, I think, says it very clearly that, you know, the quality, that quality curriculum matters to student achievement. What's more, there is emerging evidence to suggest that quality curriculum has a larger cumulative impact on student achievement than more common school improvement interventions and at a lower cost. And so, you know, as we look at research, we see even more how this is very applicable to the work that we're doing here in the state of Arkansas. And if there's something we know that is critical and key to student achievement, then we want, we want to do that for our schools. Also, as we have been strategic in this work, we've seen lots of connections to our Arkansas State supports. And I know you guys probably remember really well the work we've done with high-reliability schools, especially the work that our state did at Level One with Save Supportive and Collaborative Cultures, the statewide book study, and that was a great study. And then, the work that we've continued through our Teaching and Learning Collaborative for Levels Two around effective teaching in every classroom and a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So, this work with the Instructional Materials and Professional Development Network fits right into our already-existing state supports and it won't seem to be something different, rather than it's just scaling the work so that we're ensuring that all of our students finish strong to actualize their goals after high school. And right smack in the center is our vision for teaching and learning. And I know you've heard lots about that piece in the middle around God for Life, but if you look at the outer pieces, these are the lenses of learning. And I think Carly mentioned earlier that, you know, one of our focuses in this work is to ensure that all of our students are actively literate. And you've seen a lot of that work move forward through RISE and through other initiatives that are focused on foundational skills, whether that's in literacy, math, or other content areas. And also, the other lens is that they will be critical thinkers and then finally, community engaged. And so, those lenses of learning, as we think about high-quality instructional materials, are very important. And so, this work, it just, it just naturally fits with what we're trying to do. And of course, you know, those Arkansas academic courses and standards are measures by which we know if students are on track at each grade level. And so, that's there in our vision for teaching and learning. And then, at the very center are those personal competencies, which are lifted through our God for Life work. And you guys saw Susan Job earlier today highlighting the God for Life work. And so, all of that folds into this work and fits very nicely with high-quality instructional materials and through this work that we're doing CCC, with CCSO. And then, finally, our probably newest support and initiative around digital learning, our guidebook, we see so many connections to this work and we know that many of our teachers have been out there adjusting to remote and blended instruction, some onsite, some offsite, and that, you know, schools are out there searching for resources that are going to give them a great start with digital learning. So, this fits in very nicely. Okay, maybe the operator, Dan. Maybe a good shake will help it. Yeah, Dan, I might need a nudge, I'm not, okay. Thank you. Oh, it looks like our graphic's a little distorted here, I'm not sure why. But as we think about our work with the IMPD Network, our strategy, we have five key priorities. And as you see, the first priority is communication, which we are starting now, talking with you and other stakeholder groups, signaling quality, professional learning, educator preparation. Again, Carly talked about our focus from, all the way from pre-K to 20 and EPP programs. And then, of course, data and analysis. And as you see, those prongs there for each of those five key priorities, those are things that we're, we know that are essential to this work. And so, this is our first sort of round in our state information, build awareness to the priorities in this, in the work that we're doing. And again, Carly mentioned that we're engaging educators. The first thing we'd like to do, the very next step, is to organize a working group comprised of Arkansas educators and leaders to advise on how we determine our Arkansas High Quality Instructional Materials guidance or list for math and ELA materials. And Carly will talk about how we will kind of move into some other subject areas later. And then, we want to launch a professional development cohort that will support the successful adoption and skillful use of high-quality instructional materials in math and ELA. And again, just to connect to our current reality, again, we know that what we teach matters. Now, more than ever, teachers deserve great instructional materials so they can focus on what they do best, and that's getting students excited to learn. And I know, you know, when I spent 11 years in the classroom, I'm most excited when my students are excited. And so, if I can get a strong, great start to do that, that is probably more valuable than money. And how does this really connect to what we're doing now? Again, I've already mentioned that teachers are spreading their wings to teach virtually as well as in person. HQIM ensures that our teachers have a strong start, a starting place. You don't spend hours upon hours looking for something to teach a particular concept. You'd have a great place to start. And then, it just, it just allows them to focus more time on the learning instead of just creating, sitting, trying to think of what to write. And we know this is all about really scaling the work, continuing to evolve, and we see digital learning is important in that. And we have a recent survey from our LEA Insights that reveals that 85% of our teachers said that they create their own digital content or use a mixture of digital content they create or their district creates, or that's created by a content provider. So, again, I think this work and in our vision, vision and mission to lead and support, this work is going to be critical. work is going to be critical and important, and we're excited about that. So Carleen's going to come, she's going to wrap up, and she's going to share some outcomes and targets that we have. Thank you for your time today.
When Dr. Pride was talking about that survey, over 10,000 took that survey across the state, and we had input in the survey with T-LAG. So that's what we, we're not just giving surveys and not doing anything with the data. A lot of times, they say that we do not do that, and we're making sure we connect with what they said that's going on in their classroom and trying to meet those needs. So what are our outcomes and targets? Starting in 2021, our main target is going to try to make sure that we hit all those stakeholder groups and hear all those voices and communicate out from those early adopter groups that have engaged in development of state HQIM, those high-quality instructional material list and adoption guidance resources. We've already gone through that with ELA with the RISE, the reading, and now we're focusing, going right on into the math. And we want to make sure that our higher ed and EPPs are engaged in the process because as we learn, we want them coming along right with us so that it's not, we hear from higher ed that our educator prep programs, that we have an initiative and they're never in the ground floor with us, so we're making a concerted effort to get them in on the ground floor. Next week, we will be speaking to the deans, the council of deans for higher ed across the state, and so we want to make sure they feel that they're in on the ground floor. We want, we would like 80% of our LEA adoptions in ELA and math are those high-quality instructional materials and articulate those plans to connect the use between state-endorsed high-quality instructional materials and some of your micro-credentialing so that our teachers can grow from that and maybe even become those master teachers designation or lead teachers in identifying high-quality instructional materials. And we would like to have that 100% of LEAs have the long-term plan to make sure their their professional development is aligned, but also that support. And so we will pilot this year four districts that have historically had the least access or availability of high-quality instructional materials and put those focuses on the adoption and implementation of HQIM. And then again, we're going to focus on that data collection, and not only will we choose four districts, but at the same time, we're looking at districts, we're going to pair higher ed and those EPP programs so that we support from the ground up. And also make sure our mentoring program also meets that needs of supporting the teachers. By the end of 2023, we hope that we have a strategy to address the challenges and gaps coming from the adoptions of both ELA and the math for Year One and Year Two, and that we can really look at the data collection that not only includes classroom observation data, but student and parent surveys. We want to hear from all those voices, and then also that student achievement measures from our state diagnostic informative and assessment, summative assessments to indicate that we're growing in the, from the use of quality instructional materials. And so we want to increase the number of the HQIM, and we want to go from not only ELA and math, but eventually fold in science by the end of 2023. And then by 2025, we hope that we have 80% of adoption for both ELA and math in the state, and that 80% of our teachers agree that these are high-quality instructional materials, and they have the professional learning and support to be able to provide that in their classrooms. And again, we want to offer a robust professional development centered around skillful use of the high-quality instructional materials. And of course, we want that 80% of students are proficient in those fundamental skills. In literacy, we want those students meeting those grade-level expectations in speaking and reading and writing skills, and in math, we want to make sure they have those fundamental concepts and problem solving. And so we thank you for letting us present to you today about the initiative that we're working with CCSO on the IMPD, and we will hopefully start rolling out some PD in June at our summit. And we're not, we're providing sessions not only for teachers, but for higher ed as well and our EPP programs. And this would be where we would have you fill out a survey, but we want to, we want to collect that data from the very beginning so that we can see that when we go out, we speak, and then the professional development will follow, that it all seems seamless and that it's a smooth rollout. So thank you for letting us talk today to you about our next initiative. Dr. Pride, she's really just like me, come along for the ride. Well, we have some great teams in that, we do, we have a really great team of women too last year.
Yeah, stay close to the mic. Yeah, and y'all may have some questions, and we certainly want to take those. But I, I just, I want to say, you know, just a story that, to me, stresses the importance of this work. And Carleen, you may not even remember this conversation, but, you know, when Ms. Saracini was at a district and was trying to understand why that district was, you know, losing teachers, those teachers were leaving, and she was the one responsible for conducting the exit interviews. And she told me the story of this one teacher that said, you know, "I have a family, I have kids, and I'm spending all of my weekends and all of my evenings looking for material to bring to my classroom. I can't do that anymore. I have to have a life." And, you know, it really made me think, okay, what, what is it that, you know, what's the state's role? I mean, we all believe in local control, we all believe curriculum, adoption and all, it's statutorily and rightfully in the elected boards' purview. But without the right support from the state to, one, understand what high-quality instructional materials are and the professional development, that's why you're seeing the two, these two units, the leaders of these two units working together and their teams working together on this, and extending it to the ed prep programs. And I will brag on, on both of them, the ed prep programs, I think we, by their own admission, for the leaders of those programs, we're at the best place we've been as far as relationship between the department and the programs and the deans in, well, in recent memory, maybe ever, I don't know. It's a great partnership. But it's because we're looking for these solutions so that individual teachers or even teams of teachers aren't the ones out there having to find it all, and they're spending so much time looking for the material. As I mentioned in the presentation, they're not having time to focus on what it is I actually want my kids to, to learn. How do I get them to that place? How do I get them excited and engaged in the learning? So they have very, they have some very aggressive goals, they're very aggressive goals. But I think those, the aggressiveness in the goals underscores the importance of this, of this work. So we'll be happy to take any questions that y'all might have.
But I do love, I just love like the combination of the work together. I think that's fantastic, and I think that just elevates how that's going to play out. So I, I thank you for that. And to Secretary Key, your, your story, I think that, that's a huge, huge piece of this for teachers of how do you, we know there's going to be time where you've got a plan and you've got a grade, and that, that's part of it, but it can't be constant outside of that time. And so that's, I appreciate y'all's, y'all's input on that and your priority.
Okay, Ms. Chambers? Ms. Woods?
I'd just like to say I enjoyed your presentation. I would like to get a copy of it just so I can look at it and read through it a little bit more and absorb some of it, so thank you very much, though.
It is linked on the, on the agenda now. It wasn't earlier, but it is now, so you might just need to refresh that page, but it should be there.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank y'all for sharing so much. And I think I still have just some more things to learn, but what is, is the role still that instructional materials are a local district choice?
Well, ultimately, they're the classroom teacher, you know, in, at the building level, but the curriculum itself, you know, the curriculum, and that's where we, there's an ongoing process of educating the public on what are standards, which, that's our responsibility, your responsibility, you know, we, we develop those, y'all adopt those. Then there's curriculum, and then there's the components that, within that curriculum, and which constitute the high-quality instructional materials. So it's kind of a layered situation is the best way I would describe it, but I'm talking and my experts are standing right there.
Yeah.
No, I would totally agree with what you said, Secretary Key. This process would be about really signaling what is high-quality and providing a process by which districts would go through their adoption process. But oftentimes, you know, there are pieces that, you know, may not have been lifted before, and we want to provide that leadership and guidance, and so that piece is really important. But as Commissioner Key said, that alignment to our standards is critical, so some of those pieces, you know, we, we put forth, if you remember our vision for teaching and learning, but this is still a process by which, you know, districts do adopt their own materials.
Are districts required to select certain curriculums and report that to you all? Like, do you all have, do you all know what curriculums and instructional materials they're using, or is that...
So currently, right now, we don't know what everyone's using, but, you know, that's some information that would be great to know because in terms of us collecting data at some point, the only reason we would know, only way we would know we're reaching some of these milestones and metrics would be to know, but currently, we don't have a formal way by which we say, "Report what you have." Now, we do have an expectation in terms of our RISE initiative, you know, in our Right to Read law, that the expectation is that there would be resources that are aligned to the science of reading. So in that regard, if there's not a choice from the list, they could submit a rationale for a different program, but there is an expectation by 2021, I think, that you would have, if you purchase, that you would purchase a resource that is aligned to the science of reading.
And that's the only area in which we have issued, are responsible for issuing the list.
Okay. I, I think I, I started my career in the Wild West at the Common Core, I like to say, when, it was right when it came, first year, or maybe the year before, and then the first year. And so like, there was nothing, it, per se. So is a district required to have a curriculum for every subject?
They, under standards, under the standards for accreditation, yes, they are.
My, and I don't want to be critical or push back too hard, but I almost want to say, why isn't the goal not 100% of, is it because that's not within your control? Or is it that there are so many not effective instructional curriculums, or what are all the components that go into that 80% versus pushing that to 100?
So I think, are you talking about the foundational piece, or 80% of new adoption?
80% of new adoptions would be high-quality.
Yeah, so, you know, we would, in some instances, there are already districts who have some high-quality resources and, you know, may not need to adopt new resources, but they may add professional development. But we're hoping, that's sort of a, a great number to know that you've pretty much saturated the state. We would hope that 100% of our districts have high-quality instructional materials, but in terms of a metric, we just know by 2025, 80% is probably, it's a little off, but we feel like that's a great, a good number, especially when you think about just sort of reaching the masses, 80% is a, is a great number.
Is the barrier to that, that districts don't have the capacity to select the high-quality, or is it such that the market is so, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why aren't all districts going with high-quality instructional materials to begin with? And if they don't have them, scrapping them and changing?
Well, I would say that I think that's why we're so excited about this work, is that we get to then provide some leadership in this area because, you know, how do you signal it? What are all of the pieces that are really important to meet the needs of all students? So we're bringing forth that body of research and signaling here the things you want to look for, like, we know we want to align to our standards, right? But there are other pieces like inclusive practices, like high-leverage practices, like teacher-embedded support, so that the teacher isn't wondering what piece of this comes first in the progression of learning, and other pieces, you know, like digital components. And so, and those components that help us to differentiate or to tier supports, and so there are other pieces that I think signal quality. And I think too, as the body of research has shifted in terms of, from, think about the balsamic to the science of reading, it's important for us to continue to signal that. So I think districts would be excited to have those signals, and they will use the resources if they've got it. I think it's just a process, and so we're hoping for 100%, but I think we just set by 2025 a measurable goal of 80% of new adoptions with the, with the expectation that we have lots of districts out there who do have high-quality instructional materials.
And Dr. Moore, Stacy Smith and I were talking about this, and I kind of asked her the same question, and she said it was the Common Core, and back to that, that process of adoption, when so much of, of that, of that effort with Common Core was, you know, finding those open-source materials that fit and the time that was spent. So what we saw was the stories of the teacher that Carleen had, had interviewed in the exit interview, is because the focus had been on adopting those standards and then finding those materials out there and curating.
Every teacher was.
Every teacher was having, was curating, in a lot of cases, curating their own. I think that's also when you saw the increase of curriculum coordinators around the state. But if you don't know what's out there that's high-quality, it's really hard to curate something that may or may not exist, and this process is going to, to help them. Had we had this, I, I would say, and I've just taken a wild, risky statement here, but that if this type of process had been in place when Common Core standards had been adopted, the, the pushback would not have been as great on the standards because there would have been something to accompany and complement that that actually made sense in the classroom. That's what created a lot of the pushback with parents is because what they were hearing and seeing in the classroom didn't make sense to them, and, and so, you know, it ended up becoming a very controversial situation. But, you know, with our standards we have now, our Arkansas standards, this work is going to be a tremendous resource for, for our teachers.
That's exciting, thank you.
Ms. Newton?
I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I wish you'd been here 40 years ago, but I can remember as a teacher, you know, the first time that I had to choose instructional materials, nobody had given me any training at all, and I had to, you know, whatever I picked, I knew I had lived with for five years. And, and if you picked the wrong thing, then by experience, I can tell you, I sit in the floor for hours and hours and hours looking for something that would fit my kids, that would teach this standard, and it could be a nightmare. And at times, it was. And, you know, you think about vendors, when Common Core came out, every vendor has a shining sticker on their materials, whether it was that or not, and not just Common Core, whatever was the math curriculum at the particular time, they all had that sticker. Didn't matter what it was, you know, they all have that sticker, and I'm sure it's still the same today, you know, and, and vendors can make things sound good, look good, but you have to have the, the training to sit down and know your students and know, know your standards, and, and know, does this fit and does this reach the need? And this has been needed for so many years, you know, just to have, just to even have a list to choose from is a giant step forward for, for teachers and the people that are, that are working so hard for schools. And, and so, you know, because... that are, that are working so hard for schools. And, and so, you know, because nobody's saying, the big word that's in the, in the room right now is funding. You know, if you pick a material and you make a wrong choice, you, you don't, somebody says, "Well, you scrap it and pick another one." You can't do that, because there's, there, you know, my administrators would tell me, "Well, you picked one this year. I'm sorry, there's not any more money." You know, and, and you'll just have to wait, because we have all these other needs. And so, so, you know, this has been needed for a long, long time. And I, I am, this is the best news I've heard all day. And so, so, I am, I am thrilled with this. You know, I can't, I cannot tell you how thrilled I am, because I've been in the position that, that so many of these teachers are. Try, you know, I, I'm sure Joel is from a larger district and is, is not as, as needed. But in some of our smaller districts, this, and I, I'm going to call it a burden, this burden falls on the classroom teacher to say, you know, "What are we going to do? And how are we going to, and we're going to live with this? And does it fit my kids' needs? Well, does it teach the standards? Well, is it going to meet the needs of the, the testing that they're going to have within the year? And nobody ever told me how to do this. And with all the other things on their plate, this is just one more thing that's piled on there." And, and so, this has been needed for a long time. And I am so appreciative of this, that, and, and I think this is, this is going to be very well-received in the state by teachers. So, one question with that is funding. If we're going to have a list of high-quality instructional materials, are there going to be any funds available for districts to say, "My, my curriculum right now, my instructional materials do not meet that. And we need to have high-quality, because our kids need it now. We don't need to wait five years or whatever." So, what help are you going to give me?
Well, I'll tackle that one. This has become a, a focus area of the, it's not Walton Family, Walton Philanthropic Group, I think. So, so they are very engaged in, in this bigger conversation about high-quality instructional materials. So, we've had conversations with them. But here's where I think every district has an opportunity with their ESSR funds. And I was going to talk about this later, but I'll, I'll go ahead and talk about it now. So, you have ESSR 1, that was to help, you know, with the immediate need of relief for COVID. ESSR 2 was an extension of that, you know. But also, what is in ESSR 2 is, well, let me get to ESSR 3. ESSR 3, which is, I don't know if that's what they're, that's what we've been calling it. ESSR 3, ESSR 2 was $500 million distributed to districts around the state. What we're hearing is that ESSR 3 will be double that. And districts will have the responsibility, they're 20% of that, if, if it all, if it all comes out the way we're hearing that it's going to come out. I think the president signed it today, the, the big law. But 20% of, of that has to be for learning loss. And so, we're looking to see, okay, is, is a purchase of high-quality instructional materials, is that something that falls under that, "We need to do this to recover learning loss"? Those are the types of conversations that we'll be having with districts, and the money will be there. I mean, it's, this is more money than ARA back in 2008, 2009, or I guess 2009, by several factors. I mean, it's, it's a huge amount of money. We want to help districts spend it in the wisest possible way that's going to get them the biggest bang for the buck and the impact on their students. So, the timing for this work is, couldn't be better.
Good.
Because this will help them spend that money on those things that you just described.
Great. That's, that's, that's super nice. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think Dr. Moore touched on a, a question that I had and a concern that I had as far as, we know that it's, you know, it's a district, we love that local control, as far as districts being able to choose what curriculum is, is good for their community, and what they may be even possibly working with the co-op in that area. However, this has been a concern of mine. I know some districts do it. There's no requirement. But there's some districts that will make available to the public what their curricula is on their website. And that's something that I think is so important, especially with this ESSR 3 funding coming through. There's, I, I think it's important for there to be some sort of accountability on that district level, as far as where that money is being spent and what that curricula looks like. From a community and family engagement perspective, as a parent, I want to see what curricula is, is, is being used for my child's education. I want to be able to look through it. I want to be able to ask questions. So, I think that's something that we really need to look at in the future. I know it's not mandated now, but that, I think, is, is something that maybe we should do as far as mandating that, that is made available, maybe on the, the district website, where that curricula is, is made available to, to look at and for parents, not just parents, but other stakeholders in the community, their partners, our business leaders, our clergy, people who have a stake in our students' education, and making it, making it available for all of the partners to be engaged in, in another aspect of our children's education. So, I love the work that you all have done. I think this is so vital and so needed. And as Secretary Key said, it's so timely. So, thank you very much for what you all are doing, and I look forward to seeing what comes of this in the future.
Okay. Next, I'd like to give you a brief update on some of the legislation that is part of the department's package and the governor's package. But the two big ones for the governor, the teacher salary increase. We have had great progress over the last couple of weeks in conversations with the AAEA and with the bill, the legislative leadership on that. And so, now we have a bill, House Bill 1614, and Senate Bill 504. They're identical bills, but the, the chairs of both education committees, Representative Cozart and Senator Irvin, have filed those bills, and we expect that those will start going through committee next week. This is a $25 million increase to the budget to help improve the average teacher salaries through a mechanism whereby we create a categorical fund, as I described to you a couple of months ago, similar to the ESA or alternative learning and the other funds that are out there. But not all districts would get it. Districts would get it based on their eligibility. And we have had a lot of conversations about it, and, and we are getting a lot of support for that. So, that's next week, I think, our computer science legislation. It has passed the Senate. And I believe that the House sponsor plans to run that in the House next week. Anthony is on. If he wants to add any comment to that, or give me a nod that that's the schedule that we're, yep, okay. Thumbs up there. Our schools, our revision of our school safety law, that has passed the House, and will be going over to the Senate. Some of the big package bills, you know, that we still have a number of bills that are, haven't really gotten started yet, because it's, sometimes the sponsors have so many things going, it's hard to get them pinned down to say, "Okay, can you run this bill?" But next week, we'll start making that a little bit, some progress there. But Career Coaches, I mean, there, there are no, we have found no opposition to that, so that bill's going to get going. But the bills that we have actually made it to law, our ESA bill, and I want to compliment the work of Dr. Pfeffer on that, from the concept through the presentation of the bill in committee, to helping the sponsors with the talking points on the floor and getting that through, that, that has passed and has been signed by the governor. A pause to A to F, School Accountability, obviously, that was one of the first bills that passed during the session. And then our PLSB updates, that has passed as well. So, and then as typically happens in a session, things come up that we don't expect, and we respond to those things. And you all will remember the, the conversations about House Bill 1218 and House Bill 1231 regarding the, mainly regarding the issues surrounding the 1619 project. Well, and, and Dr. Moore, you, you know, in our previous topic, talking about the issue of local control, you know, the, the department felt like, and I testified against the bill on 1619, because, one, we felt like that that was a usurpation of the local control. There are laws in place already that where districts are required to do certain things, and local boards are required to adopt those types of, of curricula. But what was missing was a opportunity for parental involvement in that process. And again, bragging on Dr. Pfeffer, she, she remembered, you know, from a conversation she'd had with one of her parents, former, a parent of a former student, I believe it was. And, and that triggered something to think, "Well, I think we had a policy that allowed parents to, to know what was, or to inspect what was being taught." And we did some digging, and we found that there was. There was a, a, not a bill, there was a model policy from the School Boards Association that probably every school has adopted, that uses the ASBA model policies that allow parents the opportunity to inspect instructional materials. So, as a compromise, we approached the governor, saying, "Governor, we know this is an issue. This, these bills aren't the right way to approach it, in our opinion. We would offer this. Let's codify this model policy and then extend it to deal with the situations that Representative Lowry had, had spoken of, where there were events or activities that created, that were found to be objectionable by, by some of the parents, and give the parents the opportunity to know what's going on with those prior to the, you know, prior to those things happening and the students being put in a very bad place. Like, give, give parents the opportunity to see those and talk about those and challenge those at the various levels locally, the teacher, the principal, and then the administration, the school board." So, those are, that bill has passed and was adopted with overwhelming support. So, we are very, very happy that we could help find a reasonable solution to that topic.
Can I ask you?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
What was the, the bill number on that one?
I was afraid you were going to ask me that.
You can get to it later.
No, I think I have it. It's House Bill 1464. And I can look real quickly to see if it's actually made it through all the... All right, it is, it's passed the House, so it's still going to be acted, need to be acted on in the Senate. But at this point, we, we're not aware of any significant opposition at all to that.
Thank you.
And then, again, ESSR 3, I was going to mention that. Also, in addition to the issue with the material, instructional materials, we are always working to get clarification from the U.S. Department of Education on exactly what does this mean. So, one of the issues that superintendents have been asking us about is because of the loss of enrollment in this year, obviously, that affects the way we fund schools. That affects their funding for next year. So, there is a bill by Senator Ingram that is a mechanism to hold districts harmless for that student loss by making an adjustment for one year to the declining enrollment formula. But what we're learning is that with ESSR 2, there is considerable flexibility, and we anticipate the same level of flexibility in ESSR 3, that districts will be able to use their money, their federal money, to fill holes in the budget for things, for, for budget impacts that are due to COVID. I think it's not, I mean, it's very reasonable to say, "Your loss of students this year was a result of COVID," because parents, you know, either, either went to a virtual academy, they went to some other option. Anyway, for whatever reason, you have a lower budget this year than, or next year than you did this year because of your student enrollment loss. And rather than changing the formula on the state level for, for one year, if this is something that is available to them, and the feds are okay with them using it this way, then we want to make that available to them. So, that's some clarification in our communication to the districts that, as, as, again, as we have learned and more about this administration's goals and, and the new Secretary of Education, and what that message is going to be to states, then we are modifying our message to the districts on what, how they can use those funds. So, that's a, that's a pretty significant issue. And that's, but we are, I think we all agree on, on the leadership team. We feel better about that today than we did last week. And Ms. Kaufman and her team have done a fantastic job. Not only are they trying to work with the federal cohorts to understand what it is that we have to do and what we can do and all those things, but they're also fielding questions and calls daily from school folks, federal program coordinators and all, saying, you know, "What is it that we can do with these funds?" We are seeing more federal dollars in, in a concentrated period of time than we've ever seen before. And as I said earlier, spending those funds wisely is something that we have a responsibility to assist and provide support. As, as it relates to, because I know you all are definitely involved in state takeover schools. I mean, you know, you, as, as a state board, you all have made decisions on. So, you've got Lee County, Palm Bluff, Dollar Way, and Earl. And in those situations, we are working diligently to make sure that those dollars that are coming into those districts are being spent in the way that will have the greatest impact on those students. So, as we get more, and as Stacy develops the reports coming up on the quarterly reports for those districts, we'll have more information for you on what we're looking at there, too. So, happy to take any questions about anything I'd covered, and anything that I didn't cover that you're wanting to ask me about.
Last month, you gave us a sheet, I believe it was last, last month, on the ESSR 2 funding and, and the breakdown. It was really helpful. As you get into ESSR 3, can you do the same for us?
We, we will when we get that information, absolutely.
Okay.
The, the state set aside, okay, so, so that paper, that, that one pager we gave on ESSR 2 was about, you know, how we plan to spend the money to support pre-K, to support mental health, to support learning loss, all those things. Well, the, our understanding for ESSR 3 is that the states will be responsible for spending a certain percentage of our set aside on learning loss. Since that was kind of a focus of our ESSR 2 plan, we may have to make some adjustments to that, and, and the ESSR 3 dollars to be used in accordance with whatever the, the federal government says we, we must do. So, there, there's going to be a, I, I suspect that we will be making some plan changes, and, and we'll keep you updated on what those look like and, and reprioritizations as we move forward. We don't have enough information right now on ESSR 3 to really say, but I'd say in the next, over the coming weeks, CCSO and the other organizations that we work with and are members of will be providing us information on details. And obviously, what we get from U.S. Department of Education will be very helpful to inform you on. you on what our plans will be.
Also, I noticed you've got your ADE summit dates. Is this going to be in person? Do you know yet?
To the extent we can. We are hoping for that to be in person, but obviously, the, it, it won't be like the first summit, which was all in person, but we anticipate there will be a blended approach to that, observing all of the appropriate safety precautions that would be in place at that time. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to miss an opportunity and have two years in a row that we didn't have something, that we just got started and, and had so much positive feedback on. So, we're definitely going to be mindful of, of the safety of the participants, and so there'll be a, I think, a good balance of in-person versus online with the proper precautions in place.
Do you have a location yet?
It'll, it'll be Hot Springs. It, it's going to be the Hot Springs Convention Center, unless somebody texts me that tells me otherwise, that may be listening to me. But I think we've been working with them on the contracts and, and all those things. So, yeah, and obviously, state board members would be more than welcome to attend any portion of those sessions virtually or in person, as, as you feel led. Okay?
Ms. Chambers?
No, Don Benton, it's not in Hawaii, okay? So, he just texted me, so I'm going to call him out.
Ms. Chambers, did you have any, any questions?
Ms. Chambers, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Woods?
All right. Mr. Lookadoo? All right. Well, with that, are you, are you finished, Secretary Key? Okay, well, thank you so much for that report and that update. I know y'all are so busy over there with this legislative package, but this is going to help our students in the, in the near future and for years to come, hopefully, to change some policy in, in a, the most effective way. So, we appreciate that. Ms. Breeno, did we have any public comment?
No, this is you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, if we have no further business, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved by Dr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Ms. McFetrich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you so much for your time today. Y'all have a great weekend, and we'll see you soon. Bye.